I have 10 o'clock. Are you guys ready to begin? I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. Let's go ahead and begin with flag salute. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and just for all.
Roll call, please.
Good morning. Let's start with Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Moss.
Here.
Mr. Nader.
Here.
Mr. Herzog.
Here.
Mr. Haughey.
Here.
Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Nathan Herzog. I will be acting chair for this meeting. Commissioner Haughey is with us, however, he's virtually, and we thought it best that someone present be chairman, so that's why I'm doing that. I'd like to welcome everyone. It's important for Placer County to conduct our business, to ensure essential services for our citizens. We're doing everything we can to facilitate residents staying at home and promote social distancing. We encourage the public to engage in the process. With that in mind, our public comment for this meeting will be offered through a completely remote call-in process. Citizens who wish to comment should be prepared to use our call-in line. The number is (530) 886-1800. Let me repeat that. (530) 886-1800. Please call in at the time I open public comment for this specific item you would like to address, which may include public comment for matters not included on the agenda, a consent item, or one of the timed items that you see on the agenda. Your call will be queued through our county operator and transferred into the Planning Commission chambers to be heard in the order in which calls are received. If you receive a busy signal, please try back on the same number to be connected for comment. Please be aware that there is a 30-second delay between our meeting proceedings in the chambers and your view at home. Each commenter is entitled to three minutes, so hold times will be longer if there are many callers. Thank you for your patience as we work to preserve the safety and health of all meeting participants and ensure that each citizen who wishes to comment has the opportunity to do so. Please bear with us as we go through today's meetings to make sure you're heard. We'll go ahead and move forward with the Director's report.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the Commission, Commissioner Haughey, who is joining us remotely. So, the last time this Planning Commission met was on March 12th. Shortly after that meeting, the majority of the Community Development Resource Agency staff transitioned to a remote work environment and began telecommuting from home. I want to thank Justin McKenzie, who oversees our SEDRA IT department, and all his staff for making this an incredibly expedient and smooth transition. Also, all of our employees within SEDRA who successfully adjusted to this new platform in a short time. So, as you know, we took a pause and canceled two Planning Commission meetings in March, which allowed us to make preparations for a more remotely accessible Planning Commission meeting, including all the necessary precautions to keep the public and our staff safe during these unprecedented times. This also opened up more doors for public participation, where interested parties can now be more involved in the public process from their own homes, which was not possible before. Over the past two years, SEDRA has implemented an online business platform that allows for the submittal of building permits, planning entitlements, improvement plans, among other things. I want to thank our agency director for his forward thinking in doing that and implementing that process, and also our Board of Supervisors for all their support to keep that going. The residents and business community has quickly caught on to this online platform. I'm going to just kind of give you a quick rundown of some of the permit activity that's happened since the beginning of this year. Total building and planning permit applications in January accepted here at SEDRA, there were 395. In February, there were 414. In March, 454. So, a steady increase in permit activity. As far as online submittals, in January, we had 116. February, 114 permits submitted online. In March, that more than doubled, 278. And that was with two weeks of the, our front counter here at SEDRA closed. So, you know, folks are out there. They've realized the services we're providing, that they can do their permits from home, that we have staff able to work on it. It's pretty incredible what's going on, given the circumstances right now. So, right now, our online services continue to be open for business. SEDRA staff are able to remotely keep this workflow moving, you know, during this time. I just want to make sure you all were aware of that and everybody else that's listening today. So, with that, I'll move on to our upcoming Planning Commission schedule. Our next meeting is scheduled for April 23rd. There's a few projects out in West Placer, including the Brady Vineyard subdivision, that is on that agenda. And then, we're bringing back the winery and farm brewery ordinance that was continued earlier this year. We've, on that note, we have met with, or are in the process of meeting with the vintners and other interested parties. So, hopefully, we'll have a nice package to bring back to you on the 23rd. And then, May 14th, everybody knows that Hidden Falls Regional Park Trail Network Expansion Draft AR, that we were going to have the meeting to accept comments on that. That is still on the calendar, and we'll update you on that and other meetings on the 23rd, you know, as things continue to evolve for all of us. Those are all the comments I have. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, EJ.
I have a question. I don't know if I heard clearly. We were going to go up to Tahoe with a special meeting?
So, with the transition to these remote Planning Commission meetings, with, you know, public participation by telephone, and also with commissioners, their ability to Skype into these meetings, all our meetings right now will be here down in Auburn. We have all the technology here. We're set up to do that, so that's what we'll continue to do, you know, for the time being right now.
Okay, so that Tahoe project, is that going to be on the agenda here, or?
So, Lima is a project you're thinking about. That is, was continued to an open date, so we hope to get that scheduled here soon. That's not on the calendar right now, but that will be a meeting that is done in the same manner and fashion as we're doing it today.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Chair, if I could, I'd like to make a couple of quick comments, too, about today's meeting and the process. This meeting and the procedure for this meeting is in compliance with both the Brown Act and the Governor's executive orders, specifically executive orders N 2920 and N 3520. Those orders modified the Brown Act requirements to allow public meetings such as this one to occur through teleconferencing means, with limited public interaction through that teleconferencing. The agenda for this meeting and the procedures that will be implemented today during the meeting are pursuant to those requirements. In addition, the format of this meeting is also in accordance with the Center for Disease Control and Prevention's guidance to limit gatherings of more than 10 people. No more than 10 people will be allowed in this room, and the seats have been positioned in order to provide six feet of social distancing. There also have been some questions about whether this meeting is an essential government function and should be allowed to proceed. The nature of this meeting is such that it complies with both the Governor's executive orders and the Placer County Health Officer's guidance on essential government functions. In specific, the Placer County Health Officer's Directive on March 19th, 2020 instructed, that's the one that instructed individuals to shelter in place. It noted, quote, "All Brown Act meetings of the governing body of all public agencies within Placer County are deemed essential government functions and are categorically exempt from this directive." I would like to note, though, that direction at the state and county level on the handling of COVID-19 is constantly changing, and should there be any direction change on either the state or county fronts, those changes would be implemented here as well.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, very good. I do want to commend staff's preparation for the meeting. I feel safe. I've been given a mask, you know, everything's, it smells like cleaner in here, so thank you for your efforts, making sure that we're safe and healthy. I'll go ahead and move to open public comment for any matters not on the Planning Commission agenda, and we'll wait one minute for any callers that want to call in for that. Do you have a call?
Good morning. Please state your name for the record. Good morning. Please state your name for the record.
I'm here.
Yes, could you please state your name for the record?
Yes. Oh, my name is Ralph Newland.
Ralph Newland, you'll have three minutes for your comment. Go ahead.
Okay, I have a couple of problems with the Vision Tahoe project, and first of all, I don't know when they're going to tie this. I'd like to have that removed from the consent calendar and brought up on an individual basis.
Okay, Ralph, this is, this is one of the agenda items, and you will have an opportunity to speak about that later. This is, this comment period is limited to those comments made by the public that are not part of the agenda. So, if you wouldn't mind, can you put him back on hold and we'd like to?
Is he talking about a consent item?
Yes, I'll go ahead and put you on hold.
Well, then, if he wants to pull it off consent calendar, then we can do that.
Yeah, we'll do that at another time on the agenda.
Well, we haven't gotten it.
Yeah, we haven't gotten there yet. We're just doing public comment for things not on the agenda. So, you'll know if, you'll know if there are other callers that come?
Yeah.
Because we may have waited a minute since I announced that.
I haven't been timing it, but it's, seems like about a minute. Maybe just wait a few more seconds.
Good morning. Are you calling to make public comment?
I am. Cheryl Berkama.
Thank you. Go ahead, please. Go ahead, Cheryl. You have three minutes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Go ahead, Cheryl. You have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Cheryl Berkama. I'm a Placer County resident, and I attended the Board of Supervisor meeting this Tuesday on April 7th. Several of us were concerned about the nonessential activity and are actually challenging what legal has just presented in terms of, we understand that there's N 2920 and N 20... Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah.
So, I did want to mention the nonessential business aspect. I think if, we are actually challenging what legal just presented. And, sorry about the feedback. And in terms of the essential business, if you look at the list of essential workers and the list of essential activities, they are clearly listed within the, within the Governor's guidelines, and these types of meetings with private enterprise being presented are not listed. Neither are they of essential infrastructure. When I went to call in this morning, I actually had to contact someone from Planning because the link did not work. The people that want to be able to attend this may not be tech-savvy, and we don't think that the, the nature of these types of projects warrant holding these types of meetings. We have also sent, several of us, including charter organizations, have sent letters to the Governor complaining about the lack of the essential business, and we have also requested the Board of Supervisors to shift all nonessential Placer business to essential Placer business. The 90% of businesses in Placer County are small business, and we believe that the focus for individuals, including planning, should be shifted to assisting those individuals and making sure they have the resources, money, and what they need to be able to survive in Placer County and not wait until the situation becomes much more serious. This is a pandemic. It is not a social exercise, and we object to this meeting being held. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other callers in the queue?
No, sir.
Okay, with no other callers, a public comment for matters not on the agenda is now closed. Thank you for your comments. We will now move on to the consent agenda items. Are there any items that the commissioners would like to remove from the consent agenda for discussion? Okay, not hearing any. I'll go ahead and ask the public. Are there any items that the public would like to remove from the consent agenda? I do have a note already that the Tahoe 6731 consent agenda item be removed. Do we need to have confirmation from that individual?
Yes, he's still on the line.
Okay, go ahead and put that individual on the line.
Mr. Newland, go ahead. You'll have three minutes. He's not on. I don't know what happened to him.
I did hear him speak, and he indicated that he wanted to pull the Vision Tahoe item from consent, so I think there's enough of a basis to remove it from consent.
Okay.
If the Commission's interested in doing so.
Yeah, yeah, we'll pull that. I did hear that. I also received a note that that was an interest. Don't know if it was the same individual or another one. Okay. So, we will pull the 6731 Tahoe agenda and look forward to that presentation. With the remaining items, with the remaining items, can we ask for a vote for approval for the consent agenda items?
We need a motion before we vote, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I would make a motion that we approve the consent agenda minus, minus the, the 6731 Tahoe, the Vision Tahoe item.
Thank you. We got a first?
Second.
First and the second. Let's go ahead and do the vote.
I have a first from Mr. Moss and I believe a second from Mr. Johnson. No.
Well, actually Anders did.
Oh, Anders, okay. Mr. Haughey, thank you. Could I have a vote from Mr. Johnson, please?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Herzog?
Yes.
Mr. Haughey?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. I think what we'll do is we'll go ahead and move forward with a presentation on the consent agenda item that was polled, 6731 Tahoe, and I believe we have the person on the phone for that.
Correct. Janie Balvin should be on line one.
Janie, go ahead.
I think before we start the presentation, it may be worth suggesting that people call in to this item.
Hold on a minute, Janie.
Did you want to do it after public comment? Previously, what we've done with the board, I think, is encourage people to call in once the item is called. Did you want to do that now?
We can make that statement.
Let me make that statement. If you would like to call in about this item, you can call in at (530) 886-1800 to make a public comment about 6731 Tahoe, and you'll be queued up in the order that you call.
All right, Janie, thank you. You want to go ahead?
Good morning. Yes. Good morning, Acting Chair Herzog. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Assistant Planner Janie Balvin. Can you hear me? Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
All right. I'm happy to be talking to you today despite the distance between us. Thank you for having me. I'm ready for Slide 104, if it's not already advanced, on the PowerPoint. I'd like to present an extension of time request for the 6731 Tahoe project, which is an approved tentative subdivision map and conditional use permit in Tahoe Vista. Slide 105, please. The entitlements were approved by the Planning Commission in February 2012 and include 10 new timeshare duplexes and a four-lot subdivision for three employee housing unit lots and one common area lot. Subsequently, state legislation provided an automatic extension and established an expiration date of February 2017. Slide 106, please. A one-year extension was approved in 2017, and a two-year extension was approved in 2018, and the project expiration is now February 2020. Slide 107, please. The project is located in Tahoe Vista in the North Tahoe-West Mixed Use Subdistricts of the Tahoe Basin Area Plan, specifically Mixed Use Gateway West, which allows residential and tourist accommodation uses. Slide 109, please. It should be noted that the property has new ownership as of late last year, and the new owners are seeking the extension of time. You should be able to see a site plan of the approved project now. Slide 109, please. The Development Review Committee recommends that the Planning Commission approve the two-year extension of time request for the 6731 Tahoe tentative subdivision map and conditional use permit, in reliance on the previously adopted mitigated negative declaration and modified conditions of approval. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Commissioner Haughey, do you have any questions? The Commissioners here don't, we don't see you any longer.
Sorry. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
No, I have no questions.
Okay. We don't have any questions. Thank you for your presentation. I think we can go ahead and move to the public comment period of this and hear from any of those that are on the phone. If we need to pause for a little bit, people, go ahead and do that. We made the request, I'll just say the phone number again so that we all have that. (530) 886-1800. Is there anyone queued up at this point? Okay, go ahead and put them through.
Good morning. Are you calling on item that's pulled from the consent agenda, 6731 Tahoe?
That is correct.
Okay, go ahead and state your name for the record, please.
Ralph Newland.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I would like to ask that the Vision Tahoe item be removed from the consent calendar and placed on an item to be heard individually, separately?
Yes, we've had that presentation by the planner. Do you have further comments?
About that project, or do I do that at the time?
This is the time for that.
Okay. I just have a couple of problems with that, with that project. Number one being the time that it has taken to get that approved, well, not approved, but to get it underway. It looks to me like it was originally approved in 2012, and because of the new owners, we're still asking for extensions of time. I don't know if codes or presentations have changed since then. I would think that it would bear another look. I also have a problem with the fencing around the project. It looks like they're just going to put up a six-foot redwood fence, and I would have a problem with that because redwood fences don't last very long up there or anywhere, as a matter, as a matter of fact. And I would also like to know what the mitigation is going to be for water runoff between the properties above that, like off of Lidl Wild and down to the lake area. So, those are my concerns.
Thank you, Ralph. Do we have any, anyone else queued up?
Are you talk?
Are you finished with your comment, Mr. Newland?
I'm sorry. I can't understand you. Could you repeat that, please?
I'm going to go ahead and put you on hold. Is this Mr. Newland?
Yeah.
No, this is a new commenter. Nope.
I'm, yes, I'm a new commenter. Is that what you asked?
Could you please state your name for the record? You'll have three minutes.
Jane Nagri.
Go ahead, please.
I attended the MAX meeting when this project, project was first presented to include the Dutch Brothers coffee.
Okay.
The committee had many concerns.
Jane, let me, can you, can you pause her to that agenda?
I'm going to put you on hold. That's a future project. Hold on.
That'll be item number two on the agenda after the consent one, so that suggests maybe we tell Ms. Nagri that she should call back when that one is up.
She's going to have to call back. It's operator error up here. No, not at the time.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and close public comment. I do want to give an opportunity for the applicant if, if they wanted to. Do you guys think we need to hear from the applicant? We didn't have any questions at this point, so I didn't see a need to do that. So...
Well, I think if the applicant would like to make the comment, that's fine. If he's on the line.
Okay.
I think we just have Janie. Janie, is the applicant available if they have any comments?
If I could, give me one minute, and we should be able to get the applicant on the line.
So, line two, the applicant should be on.
Okay. Good morning. Is this the applicant for Mr. Taylor?
Yes, it is.
Please go ahead.
Good morning.
I don't know if Mr. Taylor heard the comments that came up.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Yeah, Mr. Taylor, I guess a couple of... Yeah, Mr. Taylor, I guess a couple of issues that came up are the redwood fence and drainage from above the hill, and of course, anything else you would like to mention too is, you're fine.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
I've been watching the meeting, and good morning to all of you. And do you have questions for me, or would you like me to address the comments from Mr. Newlin?
I think we would like for you to address those comments, and then if you have any other information you want to share, you can do that at this time.
Well, our company purchased this property project, failed project, in November at a foreclosure sale, and we have immediately picked it up and ran with it to get the project to break ground as soon as the TRPA building season starts, which will allow us to start moving dirt in June. So we're in the process of having our architect do the final drawings and hiring our contractors, getting the bids in. The drainage that he's referring to has already been approved by TRPA, so we have to mitigate per the TRPA rules. All drainage from the project, whether it's from above the upper part of the parcel or all the way down to Highway 28, all water is mitigated in the basin. As far as the fence goes, we'll have to put in new fences all the way around the parcel. As to whether it's redwood or not, quite frankly, I don't know of any aspect of the permit that dictates what type of material it is. We'll make sure that it's a quality product that fits the environment because TRPA won't let us do anything other than that. I'm sure that you as a county don't want us to do anything that's low quality, and we certainly don't. Our main goal there is to get this project done. We're also making sure that the workforce housing component is done because that's our company's main goal, is to build workforce housing in Lake Tahoe, Placer County. We're very closely with Jennifer Merchant and Shawna Purvines to get as much workforce housing done in the Lake Tahoe Basin as we can.
Okay, thank you. Any, any questions for the applicant? I think we can entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a comment if I could. It would appear that the previous owners just didn't have the horsepower to get this project done. It lingers for so many years. And now with the new ownership, I believe that these folks deserve the opportunity to get this across the finish line, which sounds like they're prepared to do that in a pretty short order. So I would certainly support the recommendation of staff, so if you want to, be glad to make a motion. I would move that, okay, is there a motion there? The Planning Commission approved the two-year extension of time request for 6731 Tahoe tentative subdivision map and conditional use permit, PC PA 20090078, PLN 16-00330, in reliance on the previously adopted mitigated, uh, negative declaration and modified conditions of approval finding.
Second? We've got a first and a second. Let's take a vote.
Is that a question about the findings? Yes, I think staff's recommendation would be that the motion would include, subject to findings contained in the staff report.
Thank you.
Still second.
Okay, we have a first from Mr. Nader and a second from Mr. Moss, so a vote from Mr. Johnson, please.
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Herzog?
Yes.
Mr. Haughey?
Yes.
Thank you.
So the decision of the Planning Commission may be appealed by anyone who appeared to today's hearing and provided a comment, or anyone that submitted written comments on this item. An appeal must be filed within 10 days of today's date and shall be accompanied by a filing fee of $619. At this time, we're going to move on to the timed items of the agenda. So the first item is the Gateway Common Subdivision, and members of the public may now begin calling in 530-886-1800 to begin queuing in for a public comment at this, on this item, which will not begin until the item presentation is complete, and so Chris Schmidt will be presenting this item. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Herzog, and Commissioners, Chris Schmidt of the Planning Services Division is my applicant on the line. The item before you today is a subdivision in North Auburn off of Gateway Court, which is off Plaza Way in the southeast intersection of Bell Road and Highway 49, not too far from where we are today. Land use designation of the site is commercial, is our properties to the north and to the west. On the east and to the south, designation is high-density residential. Zoning is commercial planned development. Design scenic corridor in this parcel is in the airport overflight zone. Properties to the east and to the south are residential multifamily, density limit of 15 on the east and density limit of eight on the south. Here's an overview of the project site. It is currently vacant. Oak woodlands occupy the site. To the south is the Golden Chain Mobile Home Park. To the east are two apartment complexes, Auburn Court and Terracina Oaks. The parcel to the north and to the west are currently vacant. Rock Creek Center is a little bit north of the site, and then the Auburn Plaza, or the Bell Air Plaza is to the south. Highway 49 is just off to the edge on the left and the west. Couple pictures of the site. The site does slope from east to west, lot of oak trees. This is the apartment complex on the eastern boundary. The project itself will be constructed off a private road on the south side of Gateway Court. Eighteen lots, nine duplex buildings. Each half would be individually sold. Lot sizes range from 3,500 square feet to 4,300 square feet. There's an open space area on the south and to the west, .6 acres. In that open space area is a pedestrian path providing access to the rear of eight of the units, and in total, 22.5% of the parcel would remain in open space. Three project entitlements, a tentative subdivision map for the subdivision of a 2.6-acre parcel into an 18-lot multifamily residential development with nine duplex buildings and up to eight secondary dwelling units, and we'll talk about that in a minute. A conditional use permit to allow multifamily project in the CPD zoning district, and also an administrative approval to allow a 50-foot setback from Wise Canal where 100 feet would normally be required. This will look at the proposed project from Gateway Court looking to the south into the project site, just another angle of what it would look like. Residential design, all will be single-story halfplexes. Each unit would be 940 square feet, two bedrooms and two baths. So there is a potential, due to the slope of the site, for eight units of secondary dwellings. This would be on the garden or basement level of these units. So in total, the project could include up to 26% potential units. So the buyers of these eight units could or could not construct a secondary dwelling unit. It would be up to the buyer to decide whether they want to do that. They can either leave that basement space unfinished or use it for their own use, could be another bedroom, a family room, or they can do the secondary dwelling unit. The secondary dwelling unit would be 624 square feet, one bedroom, one bath. So this looks at those four duplex units that have the walkout basement condition. You see the secondary dwelling level here on the bottom. This is a side view showing access to that garden level. Unit 17 and 18, that building would be a little bit more robust facade on the south because it'd be highly visible, and that shows on the bottom what that unit would look like. Proposed setbacks, 20 feet minimum to the garage, so parking for at least one car, a rear setback of eight feet, and a side setback of two feet, six inches, a zero setback on the common boundary line that splits the building in half for each owner. Heavily landscaping internally and along the Gateway Court frontage. Enhanced wood fence along Gateway Court, privacy fencing between the units, a view fence on the rear of the units, the lots, back into the open space and also along the Terracina Oaks apartment complex, and then just chain link fence on the project boundary. The project entry feature would feature signage and probably uplighting and enhanced landscaping. Parking required is two per unit, and that's provided in the garage and in the driveway. Secondary dwelling units, due to state law changes, zero are required because it's within or near a transit stop and bus line. There are six guest parking spaces proposed in parking bays along the road, so in total 42 parking spots. Stepback variance, Wise Canal is on the southeast corner of the site, you can see that here. Typical stepback would be 100 feet from the center line of the canal, which would clip a few of those lots in the backyard. So the buildings are beyond 100 feet, but if someone wanted to construct a pool or a shed in those rear yards, they would need a variance. So we're asking for the admin approval to reduce that to 50 feet so we don't have future variances requested on those lots. So the 50-foot would just be at the project boundary edge. It would provide relief to those three lots where 100 feet encroaches into the rear yards. There's 2.48 acres of oak woodlands on the site. Almost two acres are impacted. Can note that many of the trees along the project edges will be retained in common area lot that would be maintained by the HOA. There's one large oak tree of 60 inches that requires additional mitigation. We didn't do a traffic study for this, but based on modeling, total trips per day would be 193, including 16 in the AM peak hour and 19 in the PM peak hour. And out of curiosity, I looked at the walkability score for this project site, and it's a 53, which is pretty high for unincorporated Placer County, so somewhat walkable and many errands can be accomplished on foot with the medical offices, the retail, and shopping restaurants nearby. And this just shows you how that's ranked, so pretty close to a lot of things except parks and culture and entertainment. This project did go to the MAC, North Auburn MAC, on March 10th. No public comment, but there were a couple of questions from the MAC members, asking about the affordability of the proposed residences, and also who would be maintaining and what is the intention for that open space area. The MAC did recommend that the Planning Commission approve the project, three yes, one no, and one abstain. So with that, staff recommends Planning Commission approve the tentative subdivision map to allow the subdivision of 2.6 acres into an 18-lot condominium residential development with up to eight additional secondary dwelling units. Approve the conditional use permit for multifamily residential development within the CPD zoning district. Approve an administrative approval to allow for a 50-foot canal setback where 100 feet is normally required, and also adopt the mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring program prepared for the project. And these are all subject to the findings and conditions of approval found in the staff report packet. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the Planning Commission?
Yeah, Chris, tell me about the 100-foot setback on the canal and what's the purpose of that, and is that purpose being compromised by reducing that to 50 feet?
The purpose is just to protect disturbance in that setback, so you're not digging up the land, causing runoff into that canal. We routinely reduce that to 50 feet, PCWA or PG&E, this is a PG&E canal. Don't object usually to reduced setback. So it's, our 100-foot requirement is probably a little bit heavy-handed. 50 feet seems to be more appropriate. So 100 feet is standard, 50 feet is common. So we see these variance requests to canals often.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chris. We'll go ahead and move to the applicant presentation. Is Larry Farina on the phone?
Yes, we're trying to turn.
We'll pause till you get that worked out.
Good morning, Mr. Farina. Hello, is this Mr. Farina? Larry?
Yes, I'm here.
Uh, go ahead, please.
Hi, Larry, this is the Planning Commission. Welcome. We'd like to hear your presentation. If you have any comments regarding your project. Chris did a wonderful job presenting it, but wanted to give you an opportunity to speak now as well.
Well, thank you very much. I want to just, first off, say, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, that I want to thank you for your willingness to come out of our isolation environment and keep Placer County business moving forward. Your efforts are greatly appreciated. And you are correct, Chris Schmidt has done an excellent job, not only of presenting this project, but we have been working on this project for about two years, and Chris has been essential to getting us to where we are today. In fact, I would even say that he has been one of the most thorough conscientious and professional planners I've ever had the privilege of working with. Just a little background on the project, just so you understand how we got where we are. This project has actually been two years in the making. It started out as an apartment complex. There are two apartment complexes to the east of the project, and it seemed fit that we would just build another one. Mr. Jan Holman is the owner, developer, and builder in this project, and Mr. Holman, he has been building and developing projects in the Auburn area and Placer County for over 40 years. As he reviewed the project, he decided that what he wanted to do instead of creating apartments is to develop a project that actually created something that would be called attainable or affordable for first-time homebuyers. Apartments don't accomplish that. So in, with this thought in mind, we created this, this small subdivision selling halfplexes. He proposed a project that allows them to offer these, these halfplexes in the low-to-mid $300,000 range when they are completely done, which is a price that is almost unheard of in Placer County. By designing these western units to take advantage of topography, we also have the option of the ADUs. We've almost exercised the option and construct the ADU. It makes the home that much more affordable with the potential rental income that could be brought in by that ADU. So with that, I don't have a whole lot more to add, other than we're just asking the Commission to see this project as the benefit to the community that it is, and the opportunity that it is to provide first-time homebuyers a way to get into a home and own one instead of having to rent an apartment, and see that, see that the overall benefit of having this development being close to all the things it is where there is that walkability, having shopping, medical offices, hospital even nearby. And this, this project overall just really fits well at the place that we, we put it. So we're asking that you would approve this project, see all of the benefits it has to offer, and from that, I will just stop, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Larry. Let me ask my fellow Commissioners if they have any questions or issues they want to discuss. Okay, not hearing any. Thank you very much for your presentation. I think, want to open up for a public comment and see if we, do we have anyone on the, okay, we'll go ahead and move to the public comment portion and move through the queued items. Again, if you're waiting to call for this item, please call in.
Good morning. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Gary Lyon.
Thank you, go ahead.
Yes, my concern with the project, I'm the owner of the park just to the west of this particular development. I did say comments in via email, but I didn't hear my concerns in the hearing itself. I think my biggest concern with the project is the accessibility and Gateway Court being a private roadway versus a public roadway. And, and the maintenance of that roadway with such density that it's being proposed and what's there now. I was just curious what the commission's comments were on that. It's got to do around safety and access for fire and police activity.
Okay, thank you, Gary, for your comments. Anyone else?
You're welcome.
No further comments.
That's it? That concludes the public comment at this time? Yeah, if there is an applicant response to that, I think we'd like to hear, we'd like to hear a response from the applicant. Let me close the public comment before, before we do that. Thank you for the public's comments and we'll go ahead and hear from the applicant. Or Chris.
So the issue of Gateway Court, it is a private road, but it is publicly accessible. This, Mr. Lyon did submit an email raising the concern about maintenance of that road and it's, it's really not a county issue. It's up to the property owners and what that sharing agreement is for maintenance on Gateway Court. The fire department has looked at this design. We've spent a couple of weeks with the fire department coming up with a cul-de-sac that they could live with and what you see today is what the fire department, they've lessed that turning radius in, on the cul-de-sac. So fire issue, or fire access is not an issue.
I thought I read in the staff report that actually this is one of those probably strange breeds of roads that Gateway Court is actually a county right-of-way, but it's maintained privately. Is that correct?
I think the technical term is private roadway, publicly accessible, private roadway. So it's private, but the public, there's an easement, a public easement on it so the public can go on it.
Okay.
So we do not maintain Gateway Court. It's the property owners that abut Gateway Court are responsible for maintenance.
Okay. And then another, another issue that we brought up, I think the last meeting where you have wood fences that abut the houses? Is that the case here?
Yeah, there'd be wood privacy fences between the units.
I think that's something we wanted to discourage that we brought up in the past as an issue related to fire risks. I think the planning department and the building department need to be exploring some alternatives to that.
Yeah, I'd be preferred if there's no wood fences within five feet of the buildings or the eaves.
I, I know that Larry is back on the line. Do you feel like Larry can address that or?
You can see if he's amenable to the fact, the condition about the five-foot, our non-combustible fencing. If he has anything to add about fire or maintenance of Gateway Court.
Is this Larry Farina?
Yes, it is.
Okay, go ahead, Larry.
Am I there, commissioners?
Yes, you're, you're on.
A couple of corrections. Gateway Court, and I've had extensive conversations with county engineering survey, is actually a publicly owned and privately maintained road. This is something that was done back in the time it was built. There is a road maintenance agreement that was drafted when Gateway Court was built. There are currently five owners on the property. Those five owners are responsible for the maintenance. Mr. Haldeman has reached out to those owners and is in the process of trying to write a new road maintenance agreement that will include his development as part of the ones that take care of Gateway Court. We will have a HOA established for the maintenance of our own private roads. The HOA will also maintain all of the open space areas and the HOA will be responsible for maintaining the fences around the open space areas. The homeowners would be responsible for maintaining their individual fences. But the Gateway Court maintenance issue is one that we have been working on and are still working on and will eventually come to an end with all the owners on how we can all participate in the cost set. This development should actually decrease the cost of maintaining that road for the other four owners because once you take now 18 new owners on that property, you have just taken a road maintenance agreement that could be divided five ways and now divided 23 ways. So with that, I don't think the concern of the road maintenance should be an issue. We are also required to bring part of that road, part of front of our section up into the center line, up to county standards, which we will be doing as well. That's part of our condition of schedule. As far as fire safety concerns, Chris is correct. We did do intensive work with the fire department. Gateway Court itself is, is a 36-foot wide road. We are creating 32-foot wide road inside our project and we have a turning radius in our cul-de-sac that will accommodate the largest fire truck that Potser County owns. With that, there is no parking restriction as well on all of that court and cul-de-sac so that there will not be a traffic or parking issue obstructing the access for the fire trucks. I think that's about all I can say.
Did he get cut off or did he say he was finished?
He's still there.
I'm still here. I, I finished.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. I wasn't sure if he got cut off mid-sentence there.
Maybe one more question here. Yeah, I drove by that on the way after the commission meeting today and I noticed that the apartments next door must have a lot of cars because almost the entire front of this property has got cars parking on it. And so, not that it's really a problem with this proposal, I think, but in terms of future parking along Gateway Road, there may be some problems out there. Don't know. Any thoughts?
We have observed plenty of cars parking out there. Obviously, when this project is developed, that, that will be treated. One of the interesting facts about a lot of those cars is that they are inoperable. Several of them have been there for many months. It seems like when someone in the apartment complex has a car, the best advice is why don't they park it out on Gateway Court? That's been our observation and almost won't anticipate any problems. But the parking in, in the apartment seems to be adequate. I don't really understand why there are so many cars that park out on Gateway Court. You know, I've, I've never noticed the parking in the apartments being completely full and yet we have parked cars out there on Gateway Court. So I don't know how to address that other than we, we feel that once we do develop this project, that a lot of that will probably not happen anymore. We're going to have obviously more people living there and I have a hunch that those abandoned cars will be called into the fire department and dealt with far more quickly than they are now because nobody really pays attention to them up there.
I guess, I noticed that there'll be a sidewalk that goes, I guess, all the way back down to the main road. Are, in the future, are people going to have room with Gateway Court to park alongside that sidewalk or will that be a no parking zone?
On Gateway Court, I do not believe parking is restricted. I haven't seen the county tell us that it should be. You know, and our sidewalk that we are proposing will only front our project. There is a sidewalk on the north side of Gateway Court that does go all the way down to Plaza Way. It continues on to, to the Kmart shopping center, Ruffey Shopping Center there. So eventually, if Mr. Lyon develops his property, then the sidewalk that we construct on our frontage will connect all the way down to Plaza Way, but that would be when Mr. Lyon ever develops his property.
Yeah, then, you know, talking about the fire access with the sidewalk and people parking adjacent to the sidewalk, is there still enough room on Gateway Court for the fire equipment to get by?
Yes, yes. Yeah, if you, if you right there, you know, by, you'll notice that, you know, even when people park on the street, it's, I believe it's a 36-foot wide shrink which even if people are parking on it, an average car is, is seven feet wide. That's 14 out of 36. You've still got two complete lanes to drive vehicles up and down. So that should not be an issue.
Okay, thank you.
Larry, I've got a question for you. Larry, I've got a question for you before you go. You heard us talk about the fence issue. One of the things that came out of the Paradise Fire was how these wooden fences contributed to homes being lost. And so we, as a commission, have been stressing that having wooden fences attaching to houses should be something avoided. And as you heard from one of the commission members, they're talking about five feet and that includes the eve areas. So how would you like to respond to that concern?
Well, you know, I suppose that's a valid concern to one I hadn't heard of. It's not one thing we had a degree to discuss at all. So all I can say is we can look at that and see what we can do to try and come up with a mitigation for that, that concept. I'd have to talk to Mr. Haldeman and I'm sure there are alternatives to wooden fence or something that he prefers to build, not necessarily with a chief because they're not, but aesthetically, they, they go along with the craftsmen design of houses and it, you know, they really look nice around houses. I don't know how many a year I've ever had.
Hey Larry, can I, can I interrupt you? Apologies, but we're not able to hear you as crystal clear as we would like to. Is there any way you can maybe speak into the phone and maybe slow down just a little bit?
Yeah, is this any better?
Yeah, that's much better.
Okay, I put it on speakerphone so I can think right in front of my face. So anyway, I'll go back to the fence thing, start over. We had not heard about this concern and so obviously we did not deal with the concern. I will talk to Mr. Haldeman and we will, we'll see if there's something we can do to mitigate that. Mr. Haldeman generally likes to build the redwood fences because aesthetically, they fit the design of the craftsmen homes that he designed. If you've had the opportunity to be in Auburn near the famous Dr. Fox statues, if you ever want to go look, those are the exact houses duplexes that we will be building and they have a redwood fence around. It will, basically we're modeling this whole project after what we developed down there in, in the city of Auburn. That project is a totally owned project, so all the homes there are rentals. And so what we decided to do is take this project and convert it from rentals into sales units. So anyway, we can look at the fence issue and see if we can come up with an alternative that works and, you know, that's, that's about all I can say at this point because like I said, we hadn't even heard of the issue before.
Well, the issue is not, you know, the visual appearance of them. Obviously, it's the fire risk that is our concern. And so whether that's metal or block, as long as it's not combustible, that's something that we would like to see.
Okay, we will definitely take that under consideration.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Just to be clear, if I could, want to make sure we're communicating here. What I understood from Commissioner Nader was a desire to add a condition onto this project, limiting wood fences and not something to take under consideration, but as a, as a requirement.
Well, I would ask the other commissioners what their thoughts are on that. I mean, we've had a lot of discussion around this, so is it something we want to take action on now and make it a requirement? I would ask for comments from the other commissioners.
We can open up for a commission discussion. Thank you to the applicant. We don't have any other questions, seems, for the applicant or, or staff. Okay, let's go ahead and move it to discussion then. Talk about some of the issues that were brought up.
I would like to see that it is a condition of approval that there be a non-combustible fencing within five feet of the house. And I would like to see this in all future projects. I think we've discussed this before, so I'd really like to see the staff do that in the future.
You know, I personally agree with that, but then one of the things that's missing here is we're commissioners on a planning commission and it, you know, needs to be a bigger discussion amongst the fire community to address the issue. So, you know, as a commission, if we start requiring this without really consideration from the fire community, then we're going to be dealing with this issue every proposal that comes up. So just a thought there, I guess I would lean probably to, you know, trusting the developer in this case to take this into consideration and seriously do it. Making the requirement now, before it was pretty clear in the other subdivision and, but I guess I'm a little bit anxious if we're going to start requiring it every time without the fire department really addressing that issue.
I, I would agree with Commissioner Johnson. I think that if we're going to, to change an ordinance, basically, that we need to address that formally and, and do it formally so that anybody looking up the rules and designing a project can, can play by the same book we are. And so I, I, I don't have a problem fundamentally with the idea. I think if we, we need to learn from past experiences and, but I agree that, that fire and the public should have some input into this also. If, if we're going to do it, we need to change the playbook, not, not call audibles here at, at, at the commission hearings. And so, you know, maybe it is appropriate to, to make this as a heavily weighted suggestion and let staff work it out with, with the applicant, knowing, knowing the intentions.
I guess my response would be is five feet is not that much. We're not talking about an extensive change that would be extremely expensive to, to adjust in this case. So I'm, I'm going to go along with Anders in saying that we should make it a condition. I don't think it's asking too much of that to be done now. I, I do agree with the other two commissioners that this needs to be a discussion. We have been discussing this. I'm disappointed that it hasn't moved farther along at this point because I think Anders brought this up from a meeting he was in. I think that you were in it as well, Nathan, some time back and that was over six months ago. So we know that this is an issue and we should have had this resolved by now.
Yeah, I agree.
They got an individual point.
Yeah, I'm in support of making it a condition. I, I think that we have too much information to go back at this point, in my, in my opinion. So I, I would like to see a condition put in and would vote for that. And hopefully the, the applicant can find a way to, to address that.
It sounds like we have a three-two vote on that. So we're, we can test it with a, with obviously the approval of this. But I'd like to make a comment first, if it's okay. I want to say that I'm really excited about this project because it's another opportunity for us to address the dire need for housing in Auburn, obviously drought plaster county, for affordable housing and workforce housing. And I want to commend Jan Haldeman because he has been doing this around Auburn already. Larry referenced the one that's over by the Elm Plaza Shopping Center. That was, I believe, one of the first that he did. And then he's done one out by the fairgrounds on the south side of Auburn as well. And so I, I'm thankful that he's been doing this. Again, it's desperately needed in Auburn and I'm, I'm confident that this road issue can be worked out amongst the property owners. So I would like to go ahead and move that. to go ahead and move, uh, that we, uh, support this project, and I will certainly be glad to make a motion and start that out, um, I'm not sure where I need to add the condition that we'd like to consider.
So in the, you've engaged in enough conversation up there where staff has been able to come up with a, uh, condition addition to number 106, we'll call it 106A, and it would read, the project shall include non-combustible fencing within six feet of any houses.
And including the eaves, Anders, didn't you say the eaves as well?
Yeah, it's my understanding that the eaves are important to, uh, stay away from.
So we can say within six feet of any houses measured at eve?
Is it six feet or five feet?
We did, we said five, so, we can make that, is that okay?
Five.
And where would that fit, which one of these four would you like to put that in?
If you're going to modify a condition, it would be with the tentative map and the conditional use permit, so both of those would be subject to a modified condition of approval.
So we're going to have two places where that needs to be inserted?
Right.
Okay, well, catch me if I miss it, um, okay, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the tentative subdivision map to allow for the subdivision of, uh, 2.6 acres into an 18-lot, uh, condominium residential development with up to eight additional secondary dwelling units.
And the rest would be, uh, subject to the findings and conditions of approval found in the staff report packet, with one modification to condition 106A to include the following, the project shall include non-combustible fencing within five feet of any houses measured at the eve.
Yeah, can I make a comment here?
No.
Well, on this-
We have a motion in process.
You can have a second, go ahead, and then I can make a comment.
Yeah, after the second, if there is a second.
I'll stop it.
Okay, okay, I guess what I would like, you know, I mean, I think this project needs to go forward, but there's a couple items here that I don't think I could vote for based on this additional condition that we're adding into it, and so at any rate, I guess what I would propose is that we separate out that condition so it's individual by itself, and so we can consider the, uh, staff recommendation as stated.
Um, well, according to staff, we have to include that condition in one and two according to Commissioner Nader's motion.
Right, so the proper process for this is, uh, you have a motion that's been made, so then the commission would need to vote on that motion, ultimately, if there was an interest in not including that condition, then you would vote against this motion.
Separate motion would meet it immediately.
And then, i- in the event that there was not a majority to move the motion forward, then you would entertain a second motion, and that motion would be, um, it sounds like maybe to remove the condition, but it could be anything that, uh, I guess is, is on the interest of the commission, and then we would, uh, take a vote on that one and see how that one proceeds.
Does that make sense? Okay. All right, well, we have a first and a second for this, so we'll go ahead and take a vote on, on this motion.
I have a first from Mr. Nader, a second from Mr. Haugie, uh, so Mr. Johnson, I need a vote, please.
Uh, no.
Mr. Moss.
You don't support the concept, but my vote is no.
Yeah.
Mr. Moss.
Uh, I, yes, I think the applicant would rather have his project approved and vice versa.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Hersog?
Yes.
Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would further move that we approve the conditional use permit for a multi-family residential development within the CPD zoning district, subject to findings.
I think the staff's recommendation would be that it's subject to findings and conditions of approval found in the staff report packet, and the same modified condition of approval that was included in the last motion.
So move, thanks for the detail.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Moss was first.
Sorry, Anders.
No problem.
Go ahead and take a vote.
I have a first from Mr. Nader, a second from Mr. Moss, so a vote from Mr. Johnson, please.
No.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Hersog?
Yes.
Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would further move that we approve an administrative approval to allow for a 50-foot canal setback where 100 feet is normally required.
And a staff recommendation for that would also be subject to the findings contained in the staff.
Okay, thank you, so move.
Second.
I have a first from Mr. Nader, a second from Mr. Haugie, so a vote from Mr. Johnson, please.
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Hersog?
Yes.
Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I will, uh, finally move that we adopt the mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring program prepared for the project, will we add it in again?
Yes, staff's recommendation would be subject to the findings in the staff report.
Nothing else we have to do, with that, so move.
Second.
I have a first from Mr. Nader, a second from Mr. Moss, so a vote from Mr. Johnson, please.
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Hersog?
Yes.
Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
Thank you.
Oh, Chairman, is the final decision?
Yeah, so the decision of the planning commission may be appealed by anyone who appealed or appeared at today's hearing and, and provided comment, or anyone that submitted written comments on this item, an appeal must be filed within 10 days of today's date and shall be accompanied by a filing fee of $619. I want to ask, are we okay to continue on to the second item, do people need a break?
Yeah, I have, uh, just a couple comments first, uh, back to the discussion we were having on the non-combustible fencing, so as part of the housing code amendments that are underway and the multi-family design guidelines, that, that is part of that project in discussion, so I just wanted to make sure you were aware of that, that that is something that we are looking at for future multi-use projects.
To address Rich's comment about the fire folks, have they been involved in any part of that discussion, you know?
I mean, there's been a lot of stakeholders involved in those discussions, I don't know specifically which fire, but after this conversation, we'll make sure we, we visit, uh, anybody that should be involved.
Thank you.
And then one other general comment, which may lead to just a short, uh, you know, having a short recess is, uh, we have heard that some folks are having some difficulty watching the online video, and so for those folks out there, if you use the Chrome browser, uh, you should have much better luck, and then also, uh, if you use your phone browser, you may also have, uh, much better luck, you know, just so everybody knows, we do, our, uh, commission meetings are videoed, uh, every time, this is not something new, we've had this in place for quite some time, but today in particular, it seems like some folks are having difficulty, so once again, try Chrome browser, uh, or your phone to watch, see live, and now I'll turn it back to you, Chairman.
Yeah, let's take, let's take five minutes, uh, before we do our next agenda item, what was it, 11:25, we'll return.
I'm going to, uh, call us back to order here and get us started on our, uh, next timed
item, which is the Sierra College self-storage, members of the public may now begin calling in at 530-886-1800 to begin queuing in for public comment on this item, which will not begin until the item presentation is complete, so Chris Schmidt is going to present this item to us.
Good morning again, and thank you, the item, next item is for a self-storage complex in Granite Bay, the applicant is Sierra College Douglas Partners, the project is located on the east side of Sierra College Boulevard, just north of Douglas Boulevard, surrounding development is commercial, uh, City of Roseville is on the west side of Sierra College Boulevard. Here's an overview of the project site, it consists of two parcels, a 1.6 acre parcel on the north, that is the Nuff rental facility that is closed down, but it's been on that site for many, many years, and then a vacant 1.15 acre parcel to the south, and I just want to point out, because I know height has been an issue on this project, the three-story building that's proposed is on the 1.15 acre parcel, and I want to point out that existing development buffers that parcel, Walgreens on the south, an office retail building on the west, uh, future development of the self-storage facility on the north, but also the Granite Rose Business Center, and then along Sierra College Boulevard, Carl Jr.'s blocks the full view of that three-story building, also want to point out that south of that 1.15 acre parcel is a excess travelway that connects Sierra College Boulevard and Cabot-Stalman Road South that's existing, so there's easements across that that provide access to that 1.15 acre parcel, and also the Walgreens, Arco, Carl Jr.'s, and the Starbucks.
Chris, I don't know sure how, where that rear exit is, is it, where's it, it comes, oh-
So it runs here, driveway to Cabot Roman, Cabot-Stalman South, and also Sierra College, also can get out to Douglas through here, and also over here.
Thank you.
The zoning, commercial plan development, design scenic corridor, office professional, and then a business park on the south side of Douglas, residential single family to the- the west, future development of the self-storage facility on the north, but also the Granite Rose Business Center, and then along Sierra College Boulevard, Carl Jr.'s blocks, the full view of that three-story building. Also want to point out that south of that 1.15 acre parcel is a access travelway that connects Sierra College Boulevard and Cabot-Stalman Road South that's existing. So there's easements across that that provide access to that 1.15 acre parcel, and also the Walgreens, Arco, Carl Jr.'s, and the Starbucks.
Chris, I don't know sure where that rear exit is. Where's it, it comes, oh?
So it runs here, driveway to Cabot-Stalman South, and also Sierra College. Also can get out to Douglas through here and also over here.
Thank you.
The zoning, commercial plan development, design scenic corridor, office professional, and then a business park on the south side of Douglas, residential single-family to the west, and then City of Roseville, general commercial zoning, sorry, to the west, residential single-family on the east. Some pictures of the NEF rental site, not, I don't think I'm gonna offend anyone by saying it's not very attractive today. Is it already demolished? So the vacant parcel you can see is just grassland, there's overgrown weeds. Only one entitlement required, it's a conditional use permit to construct a mini-storage facility in the CPD zoning district. A little project history, Gene gave you a preview, that originally when this project came in, it was consisting of a Dutch Brothers drive-through along Sierra College Boulevard, and then a self-storage facility behind it. We worked with the applicant and Dutch Brothers for months. I think we went through four or five different site plans trying to get a configuration that worked. If you've been by Dutch Brothers in the region, they can get 20, 30 cars backed up at a time. We just couldn't get it to work and flow correctly, and eventually Dutch Brothers pulled out last summer. So this went to the back with the Dutch Brothers and the self-storage proposal. In March 2018, the county received a formal application showing this layout in August 2018. And then the summer of last year, the project was revised, Dutch Brothers backed out, and now the full site would be self-storage facility operated by Superior Self-Storage.
Say, Chris? Speaking of the microphone here, I guess a little closer, but any rate, I seem to remember this parcel coming before the planning commission in ancient years, I guess, or a few years ago. And then that's when it was gonna be a rental place. So I guess, are you aware of that, or what the history of that is?
I don't know the history, but the property owners should be in line to speak, so he can tell you.
Same property owners now as before?
Correct.
Commissioner Johnson, I believe we heard an item on this when it was a rental yard, and it was relating to them wanting to raise the height of their perimeter fence for security.
Right, it was a very congressional.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Welcome. So the primary access to the development would be from Sierra College Boulevard, full access, and then also access on the east to that travelway that provides access to Cabot-Stalman Road South. The facility would be gated, so two gates at each entryway. Site coverage of 49.9 percent, maximum in the zoning district is 50 percent maximum coverage, so they do comply with that. Total of 110,000 square feet of development are dedicated to self-storage, 721 units, three one-story buildings, and then the three-story large building C on the south. It would be a corporate office for Superior Storage on the eastern end of the site, 880 square feet, but the facility office would be along Sierra College Boulevard, 1,582 square feet. This is a look at the project from Sierra College. Keep in mind that Carl Jr.'s is in front of the building labeled "Climate Control," so you don't see the full three stories. This is a look from, if you were looking through Cabot-Stalman Road South, but there is a building in front of that to block that view. The north elevation is from the business park that exists, but even though there's buildings along that edge, the design is pretty decorative. And then on the south is along the travelway, shows the three-story building, and then on the right is the Superior Storage Corporate Office Building. On the left is the rear of one of the one-story buildings, the drive-through for Carl Jr.'s backs to that. Even on that elevation, pretty decorative. So you might hear some comments about the Granite Bay Community Plan. Douglas Boulevard does have specific design guidelines. That Douglas Boulevard corridor is very specific. This is outside of that corridor, and even in that corridor, it says one-story buildings are preferred, so there is no ban against three-story buildings. So we do look at the community plan for design guidance, and I just listed the design principles for commercial or non-residential development in Granite Bay outside of that corridor. The preferences for craftsmen-style village, not a strict interpretation of craftsmen-style, but using those elements in your building design, appropriate massing and architectural design treatment. We don't want uninteresting expanses of roof and wall facades, which this project does not do. The use of plain concrete block, curtain wall, vinyl siding, metal siding, or industrial-looking ridged precise wall panels is discouraged. This is not using any of those. Complementary architecture amongst the buildings, which this does. Windowed areas maximize along street frontages, so we have that in those offices, and even the storage building, the three-story building, has fake windows on that third level, so it almost looks like an office building. And then non-street-facing building facades exposed to public view shall have visual interest, which this project does include. So I know height is a big issue. This three-story building is 38 feet tall. The maximum allowed in the CPD zoning district is 50 feet. So an office building, you'd probably get a three-story office building, or even four stories, and at 50 feet. This is three stories, three levels of self-storage with 38 feet. To the south, the Walgreens, the tower element for reference is 29 feet, so the three-story building is nine feet above the Walgreens building, and you can see that here. And I pointed out that the area, existing development around that three-story building is gonna block many of the views from that building. So parking, parking has been an issue. The county does have parking standards for typical self-storage facilities. This is not typical. On your typical self-storage facility, we count the parking in front of individual units as parking. This, with the three-story building, and also on one of the one-story buildings, there's interior walkways or accessways to get access to these units, so you don't park right outside. You unload your vehicle and bring your material into the building. So really, the parking standards for this type of facility don't align with what we require in our parking ordinance, or zoning ordinance. And if that's the case, if the type of use being proposed isn't in our parking tables, we look at a parking analysis, and we usually rely on the applicant to provide that, but we also field-check that. So what we did is look at what other facilities in the region require, and also in Southern California. And based on that, this facility would require about nine parking spaces, based on three Sacramento-area self-storage facilities. And then a very similar Folsom facility that Superior Storage constructed, they have 11 parking spaces for that facility, and it's even larger, 121,000 square feet with just 11 parking spaces. And if we based that analysis on the Sacramento-area percentages, the Folsom facility would require 10 spaces, so they went beyond that. So what we're seeing is, for a facility of this size, this facility is gonna be overparked. And at these four area, or regional facilities, parking has not been an issue. So if we just went by our standard parking requirements and the zoning ordinance, we would need 82 parking spaces for this facility. It's easy to provide if you have small, one-story buildings where people just drive up and unload their materials, but this is not the case here. So that 82 is really out of reach for a facility such as this. So this facility does have 21 parking spaces, which is probably double of what it really needs. There's also a loading zone in front of that building C. Just a few of the standards, office hours are typically 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Monday through Saturday, 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. on Sunday. A few of the unit renters would have 24-hour access, in case it's, could be a doctor's office or a hospital, or someone that needs to get to their unit at all hours of the day. They would have emergency access without someone in the office. One of the comment letters did suggest that off-hours access be only from the Sierra College side of the complex, and the applicant is willing to limit that. So we do have a proposed condition that we can add to the conditions of approval, that only, that say all off-hours access would be from Sierra College Boulevard. Employees on-site for the facility, one and a half on-site daily, including a full-time manager and a part-time relief manager. We did not do a traffic study for this, but we did look at industry standards. You'd get about six and a half vehicle trips per 100 rented units a day, so 90 percent occupancy of 649, would be 649 units in this facility, approximately 42 vehicle trips per day.
Can I ask a question, Chris?
Yes.
Let me ask a question, because it relates to that slide, and that is, security, is it going to be mostly digital, or will there actually be, is there a plan for security officer to be on-site at certain times?
No, it's key punch entry, and then they usually have cameras that monitor coming and going. The environmental review was a mitigated negative declaration. There's no issues. Everything can be mitigated to less than significant. This did go to the MAC when it was an information item back in 2018. Keep in mind, this is with Dutch Brothers and the self-storage. The issues raised at that meeting were fencing ingress and egress from the site, the stacking area for Dutch Brothers, which has gone away, the amount of signage proposed, and then concerns about the height of the three-story building. This was on track to go to the MAC as a, for a recommendation to Granite Bay MAC on April 1st, however, as you know, MAC meetings have been canceled for the foreseeable future. So we do not have a recommendation from the Granite Bay MAC. And with that, staff recommends that you do approve the project by adopting the mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring program prepared for the project, and then also approve the conditional use permit to allow a mini-storage facility in the commercial plan development zoning district. And these will be subject to the findings and conditions of approval found in the staff report packet. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Appreciate that. Do we have a representative from Sierra College Business Partners on the phone, the applicant?
We do. Mr. Bill Loftus, I'll pull him in.
Thank you. And I'm Mr. Loftus. Self-storage issues raised at the meeting, respect the unrest and the threats from the site, state and the Dutch Brothers, which has gone away, the amount of signage proposed, and the concerns about the height of the three-story building. This was on track to be the matter of the day.
Hello, Bill. Mr. Loftus?
Yeah.
We're gonna ask you to turn off your, turn the volume down behind you, and you're in the hearing room.
Okay.
Welcome, Bill. You're with the commission now, and Chris Schmidt did a wonderful job presenting your project, and we're ready to hear from you as applicant.
Okay, thank you very much, and very much appreciate your time. My name is Bill Loftus, and I'm a partner of Sierra College Douglas Partners, and one of the owners of the subject property. So what I'd like to do is to start with a brief history to provide some context. We are also, we also developed and own the five acres on the corner of Sierra College Boulevard and Douglas that is contiguous to this property. We developed the Arco AM/PM, the Walgreens, and the Carl Jr. more than 20 years ago, and we've owned and operated the Arco Station during that time, and consider ourselves a member of the Granite Bay community, and we feel we're an asset to that community. As presented by Chris Schmidt, the self-storage facility would occupy the vacant one-acre parcel on east of the Carl Jr., and behind the Walgreens, plus the equipment rental yard and cement plant on the 1.7 acre property just north of Carl's. Now, the one-acre parcel has been, has remained vacant since we acquired it 27 years ago. Never been able to find a viable commercial use due primarily to access limitations and also limited visibility. We've explored many different options, but never really been able to find one that would work. Rental yard and concrete plant has operated on that property since the mid-1960s, and the ownership of that property, McKinney's, are partners with us in this project. And it's still a viable business. Obviously, the surroundings have changed dramatically during the past 55 years. The lease with the rental yard tenant has expired, and we have, still have the opportunity to sign a new lease with that tenant, but we decided that maybe we should explore an alternative use of the property that is much more compatible with the present-day surroundings, and complies with existing zoning and has a demonstrated meet in the community. Just as the vacant one-acre parcel was difficult to develop, the rental yard property also presents a real challenge to develop by itself due to its configuration. It only has 140 feet of frontage onto Sierra College Boulevard, but it is almost 600 feet deep. So this makes it very difficult to find a viable use for it. So therefore, by combining the two parcels from the boundary line of us, we have found a way to develop both parcels in a way that makes sense to us. We looked at several potential partners for the self-storage facility, and we selected Superior Self-Storage Group, primarily because of their extent and the quality of their buildings. They built, they have one over on Auburn-Folsom Boulevard that they built. It's similar to this one in terms of the three-story component of it. It's a much larger building, but it's right near the damn road on Auburn-Folsom Road. Maybe some of you have observed that building in your travels. Our initial development plan was, as Chris mentioned, we were gonna put a Dutch Brothers coffee yacht on the portion of the property that fronts on the Sierra College Boulevard, and then to build a self-storage facility on the remainder of the property. Well, I had to work with the planning department. We presented our proposed development at the Granite Bay MAC meeting, as Chris mentioned, and received unanimously favorable reaction from the members of the MAC, and also we had a generally favorable response from the community members, with a few concerns primarily being related to traffic generated by the Dutch Brothers. Consequently, Dutch Brothers, as Chris mentioned, they decided to pull out of the development due to conditions required by Public Works due to concerns about traffic impacts, drive-through stacking, and parking. So in conjunction with our development partner, Superior Self-Storage, we revised the plan to what was presented today. It's eliminated the concerns related to increased traffic and improved circulation and access. In fact, the self-storage facility will generate less traffic than the NEF rental yard did, and the traffic there is will not be, have any peaks in the morning and afternoon that surrounding uses presently have, like the Starbucks, for example. We spent more than two and a half years working with the planning department, Public Works, Fire Department, and other involved agencies and departments to ensure that we are in compliance with their requirements and compatible with surrounding development. We've also met with and engaged with the Granite Bay community, including the Granite Bay Community Association, to address their concerns, specifically regarding access, traffic, hours of operation, building design and color, visual impacts, and landscaping. And we also have researched the market and identified a need for the self-storage facility. Consequently, we are willing to invest a significant amount of money in our property in what we feel will be a successful business that will benefit the community. As Chris mentioned, a portion of development will incorporate a three-story building that is approximately 38 feet in height, and is within the 50-foot height restriction for Granite Bay. Keep in mind that a three-story storage building is not nearly as high as, say, a three-story office building, because of the difference in the floor plates for that building, and also that the three-story building is set back over 220 feet from Douglas Boulevard, and more than that from Sierra College Boulevard, and is blocked by both the Carl's Jr. and the Walgreens to prevent any real visual impacts. And as far as the visuals, and as far as the construction of the building, Dave Condel, who's president of Superior Storage Group, he's also on the line with me, and Dave can answer any detailed questions he might have regarding the storage facility itself. So in summary, we feel that what we're presenting is a
Okay, thank you, Bill. Ask my commissioners if they have any questions for the applicant or staff?
We also have Dave Kandelt, the operations facilities portion of the application is also available.
I'm sorry, was that, I missed that question, was there a question here?
No, not yet.
Okay.
Not hearing any questions as of now. We'll invite you guys back if we need any responses after hearing from the public, this is open public comment, and begin to work through the people in queue. Thank you for your patience, we're trying to speak into the mic, if you wouldn't mind turning down the noise in the background, and speaking into your phone clearly so that we can communicate. Thank you for your patience today, we're doing our best to hear you. So, do we have someone on the line?
Yes.
Okay. Three, yeah, three minutes.
Hello, you are ready for public comment, please state your name for the record, you'll have three minutes.
I'm watching it, watch it.
Hello, you're on the phone with us right now.
Is this Jane or Sandy?
Sandy.
Sandy, you are up for public comment, if you would please state your name for the record, you'll have three minutes, and turn off the sound behind you, please.
Yeah.
Hi, Sandy, you're with the planning commission, feel free to include your comments for three minutes.
I barely can hear you, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. This is Sandy Harris. I believe you all received-
Sandy, can you turn off the noise in the background, we'd be able to hear you a lot better.
I'm going to go to another room. Good morning, can you hear me now?
Yes.
I believe you all received a letter from the Granite Bay Community Association, which opposes holding public hearings in this manner, and asking that public hearings for projects proposed in Granite Bay be postponed to a date when the public contend of public hearing. This is a large development project at the entrance to Granite Bay, and it should have a public hearing. Holding public hearings for projects in this manner is not truly public and isn't essential to county business. Because of COVID-19, MAC has been canceled, and projects have not been heard. A project similar to this one was presented months ago for information, but at that time it included a Dutch Brothers with access from Sierra College Boulevard, which was eliminated because of traffic circulation problems. The project before you has not been to MAC for information or action. For those of you not familiar with the Granite Bay MAC, the meetings are usually well-attended, and residents have an opportunity to ask questions and make suggestions. It is a very valuable forum for residents, especially since decisions for our area are made in Auburn during the workday and difficult for many to attend. Granite Bay does not have any three-story commercial buildings, in fact, I do not believe there are any two-story commercial buildings in Granite Bay. This building would be nine feet higher than the Walgreens and would set precedent. Another concern is traffic in the Douglas-Sierra College area, which grows daily. In fact, when the turn lane for residents of Quell Oaks subdivision is changed to prohibit left turns onto Douglas, that traffic will flow to Cabot-Stallman South. Access to the units will also be from Cabot-Stallman South. This is already heavily congested due to the Starbucks Bank and other small businesses on that street. Vehicles line up to make right-hand turns at light onto Douglas or to proceed east and block this entrance. This creates a hazardous situation since the intersection is not far from the entrance into the Starbucks. Also, residents wishing to travel west on Douglas, who live in the large area north of Douglas, use this access because the left turn lane at Sierra College was eliminated a number of years ago. If Chris could pull up that slide number two, and you can look at that Cabot-Stallman South and see that Quell Oaks subdivision also can access that road, and all those people who live north up on Cabot-Stallman over to Barton Road come down and use that access to Douglas because they can't go out on Sierra College anymore and turn left. Also, it appears from the drawings submitted in the staff report that the sign for the business will be higher than the Walgreens building and be visible from Douglas. I would prefer that the metal awnings at the office portions of the project not be red, but green is proposed for door transoms and roll-up metal doors. There is another storage facility located on the west side of Sierra College Boulevard across from this site. In addition, there is a storage facility in Tree Lake just south of this site, and a storage facility in Auburn-Folsom Boulevard just south of the San Juan Water District. Perhaps Granite Bay has enough storage units.
Sandy, your time is, is up, do you have a-
I'm speaking for the association, too. And I would like to comment that I have talked with Bill, and we, some of us from our Granite Bay Community Association Board toured the facility in Auburn-Folsom, and it's very nice, very well-done, no problem with that, but we just think this deserves some public input, and some of the comments and concerns should be addressed, especially-
We agree with you, Sandy, your time is up at this point, we're going to move on to the next caller, thank you for your comments.
I was told I would have a longer time because I'm speaking for a group.
Yeah, we've concluded at three minutes, thank you. So we'll go to the next caller at this time?
Is this Jane Negri? Do I have a caller on the line? Is this Jane Negri? Hello?
Let me just send out a reminder to the folks listening that the phone number is 530-886-1800.
Hi, please state your name for the record, you have three minutes.
This is Cheryl Berkema.
Cheryl, please state your name for the record, you have three minutes.
Thank you, my name is Cheryl Berkema, I'd like my comments to be put on the record, please. I did comment, I agree with, with Sandy Harris of the Granite Bay Community Plan, Community Association, that this meeting is non-essential business, it is about private business. I sent a letter in, my concerns were regarding traffic, the fact that there is not a traffic study when almost every project on Douglas Boulevard and Sierra College, so Greyhawks, everything, there's been four or five projects, Whitehawks, that have had significant impacts but been approved anyways, so we have F-level service traffic, and the fact that the Roseville engineering has not responded, I don't, I can't tell from the MND, it looks like they weren't even copied on this. The planner knows and has received multiple times traffic impacts on Douglas, where Roseville has said that six lanes need to be provided because traffic is backing up into the west side of Sierra College. That's not being addressed here. Every project will fail going forward because planning has not come up with a solution to provide any mitigation there. The traffic survey that was submitted, we got feedback from the transportation planner that Granite Bay does not want six lanes along Douglas, so I think we should appreciate and come up with a solution before we start exacerbating the problem there. In addition, I don't agree with the parking requirements. Why would someone build something with almost 1,000 units and not expect to have any traffic in and out of their units? I think there's going to be a problem with parking there, but more importantly, if you have actually looked at the project, if you look across the street at the monstrous storage building, the Granite Bay Community Plan did not envision how many storage units, congregated care facilities, and car washes that we have. This is not in keeping with the Granite Bay Community Plan. It may be bordering Roseville, but this is not what residents would provide input on, and I think that this should go back to the MAC. I recommend that you send this back to the MAC, do not approve it until the issues that have been raised by the public have a chance to be vetted. And I do appreciate some of the changes that the applicant has made, but I think that residents deserve to provide input, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Cheryl.
Yes.
Okay, we'll close public comment at this time, and we'll invite the applicant to address some of the issues that were brought up, if there's any new items or information that could be added to, to address those. Do you feel like we need that?
I got some issue that I'd-
Yeah.
-for a ground-up discussion, if we could, please.
Okay, sure, sure.
So, do we let the applicant speak first before we get involved in the mission?
Yeah. Are there questions that the applicant could address for you?
There, I think there's certainly things that the applicant's going to have to respond to.
Okay. Let's bring up the applicant to address maybe the public concerns, and then we can go right into your-
Is it to stay on?
Yeah, stay on for questions from us. Is that okay?
Jane Negri is back for public comment, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay, let's, I've closed public comment, but because of the issues that we're dealing with, the phones, is everyone okay if I reopen public comment?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
For this individual?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to reopen public comment to hear this caller.
Ms. Negri, this is public comment, please state your name for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
Jane Negri, can you hear me?
Yes.
Wait, wait.
Yes, Jane, we can hear you, thank you for your patience.
They're closing public comment, and I'm on the line. Stop, stop.
No, no, you're, you're on, we reopened public comment, Jane, you're, you're on with us right now.
Oh, good, good. I got cut off once, and I didn't want to leave my spot. I am one of the people that attended the first MAC meeting when this was presented and included the Dutch Brothers coffee, and the community had many concerns and expressed them at the MAC, and Supervisor Uler and Commissioner Moss, and now the plan has completely changed, and we never got to have our public discussion. The major point of contention with the people that were there is they wanted something that would fit into the Granite Bay Community Plan. We thought when it came as an action item, there would be an in-depth discuss, discussion on these issues, primarily the three-story building in Granite Bay. We all realize it's the same height as everything else, but it is precedent-setting in bringing more developers who want to challenge the Granite Bay Community Plan. When this is approved, this is kind of a door-opening for more-story buildings. The traffic was also a great concern, the two lighted foot intersections closest to this project are already at Level F traffic. This storage unit will involve trucks moving furniture, personal property, in and out. They might have a very difficult time turning into the facility from the tiny Cabot-Stallman South. This will create an even more dangerous traffic problem. And I would like to have the pictures showing of the overhead picture, not the one where everything's drawn on, so you can see all the trees and how narrow Cabot-Stallman South is. The, I live around the corner, the Starbucks drive-through line is often parked in the road behind Walgreens, Walgreens, the very one this project is planning to use as one of its entrances. Also, the entrance from Sierra College will cause backup on this busy road. And I'm wondering about when they talk about the parking, has anybody talked to the people that try and get into the Folsom and Sacramento storage facilities, and is that parking sufficient? I don't think so. And this project should go back to the Granite Bay MAC and not be rushed to the process. It is not a governmental project that will help with the COVID-9 threat. So according to our governor, you should not be meeting now. No matter how you have set up the virtual meeting and the public calling in, this is not an essential project and should be postponed until it can be discussed by the public of all ages. The seniors and the rest of the public are being discriminated again, trying to use this phone in discussion. And I guess I'm a great example of that. Has Placer County received permission from our governor to proceed with these private projects during these dangerous times? Before any of this vote are taken, I think you should check in with our state guidelines, not our county guidelines. Even the Supreme Court is suspended during this time. Our Placer County planning and supported supervisors should not be more important than the Supreme Court. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time, Jane, appreciate you sticking to the timeframe. I'm going to close public comment at this time, and bring it back to, actually, the applicant, to address some of the concerns brought by the public, and then ask to stay for questions after that. So, Bill, are you back on the line?
Yes.
We're ready for additional comment, if you'd like to step away from the background noise.
Yeah.
Okay, Bill, we heard from three community members for public comment, and I'd like to hear your perspective on some of the issues they raised, maybe new information that you haven't already shared, and then we'd like to ask you some questions after that.
Sure. Well, the main concerns appear, and these were reflected in the discussions we had with the Granite Bay community and also with the planning department, were related to traffic. And a lot of the concerns that people have about traffic are existing conditions that really have nothing to do with our development, they are things like, for example, the Starbucks and some of the other developments that occurred, just a natural growth in traffic that's occurred as the whole area's been developed. And I think one thing that we feel strongly about is that the fact that our development actually would generate probably minimal amount of traffic as any use you could possibly have of that property, and it's actually going to be less than what we had with the rental yard. The rental yard had over 50 cars a day getting out of there, and this is showing a lesser amount. So I think in some ways we are helping with the traffic situation rather than exacerbating it. So, and relative to the height of the building, I think we, Chris kind of addressed that, and I did too, to a certain degree, the fact that it's buffered around by other development, and the fact that it's set back more than 200 feet from the street, and that the block, to a large extent by the Walgreens building and the Carl's building, there is minimal visual impact- building and the Carl's building, there is minimal visual impact from this building. And I think the way we landscaped it and the color scheme and so forth is something that would blend in very well with surrounding development. And we're welcome to answer any other questions you may have about that, and I hope that addresses what you asked.
Okay, thank you, Bill. I think we do have some questions for you.
Okay.
Not necessarily questions, comments. If we take a look at the exhibit that's up right now and take a look at where Gate 2 is by the corporate office? And then, Chris, if you could go back to that aerial, the overhead shot that shows the roadways and that? I mean, I guess, let me start off by saying first, I think the building they're proposing is an attractive building as far as storage buildings go, or as far as anything else that's likely to be built there. It's certainly a drastic improvement over the rental yard as far as aesthetics goes. I don't think as far as, I don't think as far as traffic goes, you're going to find a use for this much acreage that will generate less traffic. So I, and I agree with the applicant that, you know, the concern stated with most of the traffic is stuff that already exists, and their contribution to it will be, will be small. My issue, though, is if you look at where Cavett-Stallman South is on this map or on this photo, there are several times during the day when that light is red that traffic backs up past the entrance into the center. Also, Starbucks, their drive-through winds around and goes back out to Cavett-Stallman South, especially first thing in the morning, but also around lunch and in the evening too. This becomes, and I try to utilize this to go buy my fuel at the Arco and cut through there because I can't go up from where I live and make a left-hand turn on Sierra College. Walgreens has a drive-through for their pharmacy that's used quite extensively. In fact, more now than ever before. But, but the traffic there is, and then, like I say, you have cut through for people trying to access the Carl's and the Arco. This is quite a busy little thoroughfare here, and it gets plugged beyond usability on a regular basis already. If there is any kind of a gate other than emergency access only on that backside, we're going to take a bad situation and make it much worse, especially if you have larger vehicles or vehicles with trailers trying to get in and out of there at those peak It's going to make that just, just a mess. It's already a mess. It's already a big mess at peak hours, and it's going to make it even worse. I would like to see something done with that, that gate number two that, that either if it's, if it's necessary for fire circulation or something, then it becomes an emergency access. But to use it regularly is going to, going to plug that beyond belief.
I'll take a swing, and I'm going to ask Public Works to, to speak about traffic studies in general and when do we require them for projects, specifically for projects that are consistent with zoning on a piece of property. So there's a lot of confusion that people think that every new project needs a traffic study, and that's, that is not the case.
And, and Chris, if I could, please, the traffic study, I don't know, would take into consideration the parking lot off the roadway, and that is the issue, because it's already so congested that it's backing out onto Cavett-Stallman. And, and then it is impeding traffic, but I don't know that, that the traffic study would necessarily recognize and address that.
Well, they would, they would look for that congestion in that those barriers are where there's backups, and there's not a free flow of traffic along the roadways. And we'll point out that the hours of operation for the facility are generally 9:00 a.m. on weekdays and weekends. So in theory, a lot of that Starbucks congestion should be less. The, the school traffic on Cavett-Stallman, people heading out, dropping the Kizava School, should be gone by then. So this shouldn't be adding to that morning peak congestion. I do have a sample or a proposed additional condition about off-hours access to the site. The applicant has agreed to, Sue has that language. So that rear gate wouldn't be available for entrance into the facility off-hours? They're going to need that gate for circulation. There's really not an area to turn around. So even if you do enter on Sierra College and you're driving a U-Haul or pulling something, you're going to want one way in off Sierra College and exit to that rear gate. There's really not a convenient place to, to do a three-point turn to get out of there. So the gate is necessary. The applicant is willing to restrict off-hours access, to restrict it in the rear and only allow it from Sierra College Boulevard. So that should alleviate a lot of that Cavett-Stallman mess in the morning peak.
And, Chris, apologies. If you could, just for the, due to the structure of the meeting today, could you read that proposed condition into the record, just so those watching online can hear it? Thank you.
So we would add a new condition 67 under miscellaneous conditions, and that reads, "Public access to self-storage facilities shall be during office hours. Customers with a demonstrated need may have 24-hour access to the units. All after-hours access shall be restricted to the Sierra College Boulevard gated entryway." And it might be a good time for Public Works to, to talk about traffic studies and when they're required.
Say, say, Chris, maybe, one quick. When people are leaving the property onto Sierra College Boulevard, they, they only available to go up with a right turn?
No, there's, there's full access left and right, in and out of the facility. So there's not a raised meeting today, and we're not requiring one.
So what is there, a middle lane that people can turn into? Is that what?
There's a center turn lane, correct.
Okay.
Can we hear from Public Works at this time? We'll see if our IT guys can turn that mic on for us. We do wipe down.
Good morning. Rebecca Solomon with the Transportation Planning Division. I guess, in general, I think I'd like to mention that the type of traffic patterns that have been brought up as small as you guys are looking at or the commenters are looking at, doesn't get looked at in a traffic study. So I do want to remind you that we look at patterns as far as a peak hour or how it's used in a, in kind of a larger scale. So when you were talking about traffic cycles and how many vehicles will wait for them to exit, for instance, off of Cavett-Stallman, one traffic cycle could be like two minutes. So we're talking about the traffic coming from this facility being one or two vehicles, maybe maximum, in one of those traffic cycles. So I guess just in general, I wanted to point out that if we did do a traffic study, we wouldn't get that in-depth to, to understand how many vehicles would be contributed per cycle. So I just wanted to kind of start with that. But also remind everyone that SEQA is moving towards a VMT threshold and not level of service. So we do still have that threshold in our community plans, and we use that to gauge how much these projects will affect traffic. But as far as the SEQA standpoint, we don't, we don't look at level of service anymore. So I don't know if there's a specific question that you'd like me to answer, but that was kind of the gist of what I wanted to get across.
And I, I appreciate that, and I understand what you're saying, and like I speculated, we wouldn't get into parking lot activities, but that's where this problem, problem exists, is, is trying to exit off of Cavett-Stallman South into the parking lot. Already is prohibitive at some times during the day because of Starbucks traffic and Walgreens and Carl's and Arco traffic. It comes to a complete standstill in there between Cavett-Stallman South and what would be, I guess, the east corner of this property. It's just plugged at certain times of the day. And with that, putting another, another gate, another, another driveway to an additional business on there is just going to take a bad problem and make it worse. It will spill over onto Cavett-Stallman Road and affect traffic.
I would like to hear from the applicant, how, what kind of response they've got, because I think it's a very legitimate concern. They own that property, so they should be aware of the issues already, and so I'd like to get a response.
Yeah. So real, real quick, Chairman, we do have another part of the applicant team. Dave? Yes. I know that we have Dave, part of the applicant, that wants to speak about this issue. I'd like to bring him on the phone. Dave Kandelt, he's a facilities operations person, and so we'll go ahead and listen to what he has to share about that.
Hello, Dave? You are on in the hearing room.
Thank you. I'm ready.
Please turn the volume down behind you and, and proceed.
Hi, Commissioners, good afternoon. This is Dave Kandelt, the owner, applicant's superior self-storage.
Hi there, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay. You're, you're quite faint. I cannot hear, but what I wanted to address is, we received the issues here pertaining to traffic and building height, and it's important to understand that the prior and present use of the equipment rental yard exceeds the traffic trip generation of our proposed site. We studied the circulation. We focused on traffic on Sierra College and worked with South Placer Fire to arrive with a secondary access at the, at the end of the property. We need to pay particular attention to the traffic studies in that storage, self-storage is a very low traffic ship, trip generator in general, but more importantly, it is very low in peak traffic trips. The eight o'clock in the morning, the five o'clock in the evening, and the study depicts that. And this is often a, a big criteria in often approvals in various jurisdictions throughout. So Mr. Moss makes, makes reference to plugging of the area in the parking area. And, but he, we need to understand that the gate sets back, and in theory, that would be an exit gate primarily. In fact, we may concede to having that exit traffic only. Are my, are you guys hearing my, my comments?
Yes, we can hear you.
I can't hear anybody.
Yes, we can hear you.
Tell him. Nathan?
Yeah, we can hear you. We can hear you just fine.
Okay.
So Dave, go ahead and continue if you had more to share about that, otherwise I think we may have some questions.
Okay, so, so the, the copy is, is obviously a, a very morning peak generator, as are the fast-throughs, and they're also peak generators in the, in the evenings. So we feel that the traffic, if you pay particular attention to the study we provided, and the study is based on 124,000 square foot of project, this is 110,000 gross square foot project, and I believe for the analysis, we utilized those numbers even though the traffic study at hand is greater than the proposed project. And for the record, I just want to make reference in that, you know, Mr. Moss is an owner affiliate of Tree Lake Self-Storage, which is a, the only other self-storage in Granite Bay. There is only one facility in Granite Bay currently. This would be the second, and that we would hope that there would be no decisions made based on competition.
Okay, thank you for those comments, Dave.
For the record, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Moss is not an owner of any self-storage facility.
Again, I cannot hear, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Moss has no ownership interest
I've got my volume down, I've got everything shut down.
in any storage facility, anywhere.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for the applicant or staff from the commission?
Just, I wanted to confirm with staff that this plan, its height, its coverage, its parking, is in compliance with the codes and ordinances in the Granite Bay Plan. You know, and one thing to persons who have made comment, if they don't like the height, they need to go in and change the Granite Bay Plan to reduce height in Granite Bay. But as a commissioner, we're looking at what is allowed by those plans, and I believe this is in compliance with the plans.
Commissioner Haughey, you, you are correct. It is in compliance with the zoning ordinance requirements for that zoning district, the design guidelines for the Granite Bay Community Plan. There is mention of a preference for one-story buildings, but that's along the Douglas Boulevard corridor. This parcel is allowed 50 feet in height, so it is in compliance with what's allowed in the CPD zone district. It meets coverage, and it does meet the parking required. Matter of fact, it exceeds what's anticipated as far as parking goes.
Thank you, Chris. I appreciate it. The other comment is, this is about the lowest use you could get for traffic of any uses in a commercial zone. So when it comes to adding traffic, a lot more things could be added than this. So to me, this is probably compatible with the existing traffic conditions.
Thank you, Commissioner Haughey. I know that Commissioner Nader has a comment.
I live by a couple of large storage facilities, and they have extremely low traffic. It almost looks like they deserted most of the, the majority of the time. So I don't anticipate a real issue with the traffic other than what's already there. And I would suggest that maybe as commissioners, we might want to add a condition that makes this only, an exit only at the rear of this facility, at least to try to moderate the traffic impacts a little bit. So I don't see how there's any other way to design this unless you make it a much smaller facility to be able to have just one access in and out on Sierra College, because they would have to have a turnaround area in there. So my, I would suggest that we put that kind of condition in it to try to help this situation. So I'll throw that out there.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
Could you get the, yes. I guess I'm really not following on that. It sounds like you're talking about the exit only on the Cavett-Stallman.
The Cavett-Stallman, right, into the bill of, end of this project, that they could, they could have, would enter on Sierra College, and they can only exit coming out towards Cavett-Stallman. Now, if they're able to turn around, if they're just in a car or something, and they can turn around and go back out Sierra College, that's fine, but, and they should encourage them to try to go back out on Sierra College. But if they're pulling a trailer, then they should, you know, it's going to be, they can't turn around, as they said. So they would need to exit out towards Cavett-Stallman.
So it sounds like
The issue that I was hearing was Cavett-Stallman.
Correct.
And so if they're going to exit on a Cavett-Stallman, I guess I'm not following how that resolves the issue.
Well, I think we should not have entrance, using that as an entrance into the, into the project. It should be, or into the storage facility. It should, the entrance should only be off of Sierra College, and that, that rear exit is just an exit, and that's it, not an entrance.
So the, the additional piece that Mr. Schmidt added for off-peak only, you're asking to exist
Twenty-four seven.
Yeah, that's, that condition being made 100% of the time.
Correct. Twenty-four seven.
I would ask the applicant if that works for their operations.
Applicant here, Dave Kandelt, yes, we would be agreeable to have the access gate at the Cabot Stallman side be an exit gate only. In theory, with the two-story, or excuse me, the three-story building, a large degree of our customers would be able to back into the elevator entry area and actually, you know, determine if they want to go out Sierra College or they want to go out Cabot. So we would mitigate the traffic with that regard, but like the Commissioner mentioned earlier, there will be requirement for larger vehicles or vehicles that do not turn around to be allowed to exit the Cabot Stallman gate only.
So is that agreement?
Yep, he's agreeing with it. So Chris, could you come up with some language on that? And I'd be glad to start the motions on.
I would just do a simple, the Cabot Stallman gate shall be used for project egress only.
Okay. When you have a chance, you can put the recommendations back. And you have some conditions. Where would those go in, at least a couple of them? Do I reference them specifically, or...
So if you wanted to add a condition, the place to add it would be for the conditional use permit, which would be item two on staff's recommendation. And I just would want to clarify a bit on the modification of the condition. The paper sheet that I was provided, which I believe Chris wrote into the record, just a couple of things. One, it identifies the condition as 67. There is already a 67 in there, so my proposal would be to move that to 66A. And if there was an interest in limiting that exit, that other access point to egress only, my suggestion would be to modify condition 31 instead. And that condition says, and I'll read the full condition into the record, "The improvement plan shall show the construction of the gate across the access aisle from Sierra College Boulevard located east of the proposed parking lot is shown on the improved site plan." Period. "The face of the gate and/or keypad shall be a minimum of 90 feet from the edge of pavement of the street and shall open to allow a vehicle to stop without obstructing traffic." Period. "Gate entrances shall be at least two feet wider than the width of the traffic lane serving the gate." Period. My suggestion, revision would be on the second-to-last sentence to add a portion that says, "but shall be used for project egress only." So the full sentence would state, "The face of the gate and/or keypad shall be a minimum of 90 feet from the edge of the pavement of the street and shall open to allow a vehicle to stop without obstructing traffic, but shall be used for project egress only." Does that work for you, Chris?
I have a question on 67A that you referenced. Chris, were there two modifications that you made, and do they both fit into 67A, or they go somewhere else?
So the 24-hour access to be limited to Sierra College Boulevard, I believe that's no longer an issue, because all access would be from Sierra College now.
Right.
During project operating hours and off-hours.
So the only modification we have is in 67A right now and 31, right?
Would only be 31.
Would only be 31?
Correct.
So would you leave the condition 67A as worded on the one that was provided?
No, that would go away. The question is, do we still have a standalone condition that says Cabot Stallman gate shall be used for progress egress only, or project egress only?
So we wouldn't need the first sentence about public access during, to the self-storage facility shall be during office hours?
Correct.
So then we wouldn't include the miscellaneous condition and would just provide the modification to condition number 31?
Okay. We got that clear? Okay, then I would like to make a motion-
I don't know if that works, because 31 is referencing Sierra College Boulevard access. So I think we need a standalone sentence about Cabot Stallman gate being used for facility egress only.
The way I read the condition, it says, "The gate across the access aisle from Sierra College Boulevard." Is that the south gate?
I'm not sure what that references. I know ESD is here, if they want to clarify, because it says access aisle from Sierra College Boulevard, not from the travel way to the south.
So I can jump in here, so the language that we're going to add shall be used for project egress only, why don't we just insert the Cabot Stallman egress shall be used for project egress only, or gate shall be used for project egress only? But the Cabot Stallman gate should be used for project egress only? Correct. Yeah, so the modification would be the second-to-last sentence on condition 31 would state, "The face of the gate and/or keypad shall be a minimum of 90 feet from the edge of pavement of the street and shall open to allow a vehicle to stop without obstructing traffic," comma, and then the added part would be, "But the Cabot Stallman gate shall be used for project egress only."
So DBW happy with that? So are we just addressing it in 31? Or are we going to have some 7A?
It would just be addressed under 31.
Okay. All right. Well, back to the motion. I would like to move that we adopt a mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring program prepared for the project. And do we now use whatever language we're going to use for 31 is modified? Legal counsel, do I put that in this motion? I know I need it.
It's not necessary for the mitigated negative.
It's not necessary for the mitigated negative declaration motion, but for the second one it would be.
And subject to the findings and conditions of approval found in the staff report packet.
Second.
We have a first and a second, let's take a vote.
I have a first from Mr. Nader, a second from Mr. Haughey, so a vote from Mr. Johnson, please.
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Hersog?
Yes.
Mr. Haughey?
Yes.
Thank you.
I would further move that we approve the conditional use permit to allow a minimum, many storage facility in the commercial plan development zone district. And this is where we put it in.
And staff's recommendation would be that that would be subject to the findings and conditions of approval found in the staff report packet, and as modified for condition 31, as indicated previously.
Okay, so move.
Second.
A first, a second, let's take a vote.
I have a first from Mr. Nader, I believe a second from Mr. Haughey again, is that correct?
Correct. That is correct.
Could I have a vote from Mr. Johnson, please?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Hersog?
Yes.
Mr. Haughey?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so the decision of the planning commission may be appealed by anyone who appeared at today's hearing and provided comment, or anyone that submitted written comments on this item. An appeal must be filed within 10 days of today's date and shall be accompanied by a filing fee of $619. I'd like to continue on to our third agenda item, it's 10:45. So we'll go ahead and move to that.
Should we take a two-minute recess just to scrub the area?
Sure, why don't we take a two-minute recess, and we'll return at, I have 12:41 on my time. I guess we need a little more than two minutes, which is okay. I think we'll go ahead and get started again. The next timed item is Los Lagos Lots D and E. Members of the public may now begin calling in at 530-886-1800 to begin queuing in for public comment on this item, which will not begin until the item presentation is complete. Let me just remind folks that are calling in, if you wouldn't mind stepping away from your computer so that we don't get the feedback from the delay, we are 30 seconds delayed, and so it causes a problem with being able to hear you clearly. So if you wouldn't mind stepping into the other room or turning off your volume on your computer, that will really help. So call in now, get in the queue, and we'll go ahead and hear from Delaney Farnham.
Minus Los Lagos.
Los Lagos.
Yeah.
Okay, you got the Los Lagos. What did I say? Los Gadas? Oh, I'm used to the Bay Area. Los Lagos, okay.
Well, good afternoon, members of the commission. I'm Delaney Farnham with Los Arca County Planning Services. Today, we are hearing a request for a subdivision modification to the Los Lagos Lots D and E subdivision, as well as a request for a minor boundary line adjustment. The project is Lot E of the Los Lagos subdivision Lot D and E. It is a 0.8 acre parcel located southwest of the intersection of Barcelona Court and Vista del Lago Court, and a half a mile south of the intersection of Auburn Folsom Road and Los Lagos Circle in the Granite Bay area. The project site is zoned residential agriculture, combining minimum build site of 20 acres, combining planned residential development of 0.44 dwelling units per acre. The Los Lagos Lots D and E subdivision was originally approved by the Board of Supervisors in November of 1989. The subdivision approval was originally to convey ownership from one property owner to another. At that time, these lots were not approved for residential development. However, they were conditioned to allow future requests to be heard in front of the planning commission under further county review. In 2014, Lot D came in with a 15-lot major subdivision request. In July of 2016, the planning commission approved that major subdivision of Lot D, which is the, confirm here, is the Vista Estates subdivision. So today, we have Lot E, which is a 0.8 acre remaining parcel. They are requesting development rights as a single residential parcel site, as well as a minor boundary line adjustment with the adjacent parcel to the east, which is Lot 17 of the Los Lagos subdivision, Unit 1A. Both Lot E and Lot 17 are undeveloped, and they are currently under common ownership. The minor boundary line adjustment is a request to transfer 0.36 acres, abandoning this original property line, proposing a new property line, which would then allow Lot 17 to have a building site located to the southern portion of the parcel, and Lot E to have a building site centrally located. The minor boundary line adjustment would result in Lot E as a 0.5 acre parcel, and Lot 17 as a 1.34 acre parcel. Lot E was previously under, previous ownership. The lot was never developed with a residential use. However, that property owner did do extensive landscaping, which included ponds, water features, walking pathways. Additionally, this lot is restricted by a high-voltage tower, which is located at the north corner of the site, and there's also a 50-foot PG&E easement that runs from the corner all the way through both parcels. So without the minor boundary line adjustment, Lot 17 wouldn't have a viable building site. In order to build there, they would have to do extensive demolition, filling of ponds and water features, and extensive grading to create a buildable site. The minor boundary line adjustment provides both lots to have suitable building sites. So currently, Lot E is undeveloped. With this request for a subdivision modification, Lot E is conditioned to be served with water, sewer, and legal access. Additionally, Lot E is going to be held to the development standards of the Los Lagos subdivision, which includes structural setbacks, lot coverage, and the Los Lagos Architectural Review Committee to approve any future building plans. This is a photograph of Lot 17. This is the high-voltage tower. Again, the easement runs overhead, but it's 50-foot wide. There's also extensive ponds, water features, bridge crossings, walking pathways, and gardens and landscaping. So with this request, we, the Development Review Committee, is recommending that the planning commission find the project categorically exempt from environmental review, approve the subdivision modification to Sub 229 Los Lagos Lots D and E, to modify condition five to allow Lot E as a residential building site, and to approve the minor boundary line adjustment to transfer 0.36 acres, all subject to the findings and conditions of approval found in the staff report. Let me know if you have any questions.
Okay, thanks, Delaney. I think we'd like to hear from the applicant if they're available. Eric Castell? Hello, Mr. Castell. Mr. Castell, Delaney just finished a presentation. We're ready to hear from you as the applicant.
Yes, I purchased these lots to build my house on, and the way it's presently landscaped, I would like to have the minor- I would like to have the minor boundary line adjustment. And then resultant, we have the Lot E there, which can also be developed. And that way, those were originally in the master plan for Los Lagos. That would satisfy what I was trying to do. Do you have any questions for me?
Let's ask, commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant? We have none at this point. I think what we'll do, do you have any for Delaney either? Okay. I'm not seeing any questions right now. We'll open public comment, and we'll invite you guys back if there are any issues. Open up for a public comment. We'll wait a period of time to make sure that delay is resolved. Do we have anyone right now in the queue? Okay, we'll wait for a little bit.
All the space.
Okay, I think we've waited long enough past the delay. There's no public in the queue at this point, so I'll close public comment and bring it for discussion at the commission at this point.
Well, I'm glad to make a motion unless there's some questions or comments that any of the commissioners want to make. Then I will go ahead and make a motion that we find the project categorically exempt from environmental review pursuant to provisions of Section 15305 of the California Environmental Quality Act Guidelines and Section 18.36.070 of Placer County Environmental Review Ordinance, classified minor alterations in land use limitations, all subject to the findings and conditions of approval found in the staff report packet. Anybody want to second that?
I will second that.
First and second, take a vote.
I have a first from Mr. Nader, a second from Mr. Moss. So vote for Mr. Johnson, please.
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Hersog?
Yes.
Mr. Howgie?
Yes.
Thank you.
I would further move that we approve the subdivision modification PLN 19-00384 of Sub 229, Condition Number 5, to allow for a residential building site on Lot E, all subject to the findings and conditions of approval found in the staff report packet.
Second. First and a second, take a vote.
First from Mr. Nader, a second from Mr. Moss. So vote for Mr. Johnson, please.
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Hersog?
Yes.
Mr. Howgie?
Yes.
Thank you.
I would finally move that we approve the minor boundary line adjustment to transfer 0.36 acres from Lot E to Lot 17 of Los Lagos, Unit 1A, all subject to the findings and conditions of approval found in the staff report packet.
Second. First and a second.
First from Mr. Nader, a second from Mr. Moss. So vote for Mr. Johnson, please.
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Hersog?
Yes.
Mr. Howgie?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move to our, before we do that, that's a final action that would need the appeal. Okay, I thought maybe if no public made a comment, were there written components? No, no, they were written. Okay. Yeah, if nobody comments, you don't need to do it. Just it. I'll do it. Okay, I'll do it. The decision of the planning commission may be appealed by anyone who appeared to today's hearing and provided comment, or anyone that submitted written comments on this item. An appeal must be filed within 10 days of today's date and shall be accompanied by a filing fee of $619. Moving on to our fourth agenda item, 11 o'clock. We go on to Bartlett Alpine Meadows Estates subdivision, Number 9, Lot 330. Members of the public may now begin calling in at 530-886-1800 to begin queuing in for public comment on this item, which will not begin until the item presentation is complete. Again, that number is 530-886-1800. And Stacy Wydra will be presenting this item. Yeah, we get her saved.
Thank you. Took my mask guard off. Good morning, commissioners, or good afternoon, excuse me. I am Stacy Wydra in our Tahoe City office, and I'm here today to present to you, I'll actually be doing two map modifications under the same owner, Mr. Bartlett, but I will begin with Lot 330. To quickly get you oriented as to where the project site is located, it is located in Alpine Meadows, specifically within Track Number 200 Alpine Meadows Estates subdivision, Unit Number 9. And specifically, it's located at 1155 Snowcrest Road, Lot 330. The lot contains a residential general plan designation of the Alpine Meadows General Plan and is zoned single-family residential, four dwelling units per acre, of which the proposed project before you today is consistent with both, the general plan and the zoning designation. When the Alpine Meadows Estates subdivision was recorded in 1979, uniquely, there was, or there is, a 20-foot mapped front setback and a 60-foot rear mapped setback, together with two 5-foot side setbacks, or, excuse me, public utility easements that are currently recorded on the subject parcel. So the parcel is approximately 0.43 acres in size, has a steep upsloping slope of approximately 34%. As I mentioned, the two mapped setbacks. Uniquely, there is also a water course setback from the water course and/or drain adjustment that is located on the adjacent lot, Lot 329. There we go. It's right in here. The owner does own both. And, but with the water course setback, there is a 100-foot setback from the center line of that water course, or in this case, a mapped drainage adjustment. So when all of the setbacks are applied, so that mapped front setback, that rear 60-foot setback, the two sides, which actually are 10 feet on the sides, which include that 5-foot public utility easement I mentioned, a building envelope of approximately 1,500 square feet is created. And that building envelope ends up basically in this area at a very awkwardly triangular shape. This site is currently developed with a 528-square-foot garage with a second story of storage. This garage was uniquely approved originally as a two-car parking pad back in 1978. That parking was specifically for the adjoining parcel on 329. So it was their parking for the residence that's on Lot 329. At that time of the variance, they recognized and approved a 0-foot setback. However, there was no recognition of the 20-foot mapped setback that we are, why we're here today, nor the drainage adjustment and/or water course setback. The access from the approved two-car parking pad was constructed through an elevated walkway that exists today. So that was constructed, and again, no acknowledgement of the water course setback or a side setback either. So then subsequently, in 1982, a conditional use permit was approved to allow for that two-car parking pad to be constructed with a garage and then a second floor of storage only. And with that conditional use permit, it recognized a 0-foot setback and had two requirements, that the second story of that garage was not allowed to be a dwelling unit or living space. It was for storage only. But also that a deed restriction be recorded, of which it was, which that the two parking spaces inside the garage were exclusively, were exclusive to Lot 329 and the residence that was built on that property. Again, it's important to note that the elevated walkway, the map setback, and the drainage course, water course setback, were not acknowledged back in 1982 either.
Says Stacy?
Yeah.
Now, the 0-foot setback, that is from the front?
Correct.
So there's no driveway?
No, it's actually, the driveway is right in the right-of-way. So it's built right up to the property line today.
Okay.
So today, we are here for this lot to construct a single-family residence where they are requesting a 16-foot, 6-inch building front setback to the garage, 13 feet, 6 inches to the eaves. And it's, well, it's important to note also that the, where, so we're increasing that setback that exists today. And also, with the proposed 16-foot, 6-inch building front setback, the applicants are also maintaining the required 20 feet from the edge of traveled way to the face of the garage that's proposed today. We are also, or the applicants are also requesting consideration of a 30-foot, 33-foot setback from the center line of the drainage adjustment that again is on the adjacent property. And then also acknowledge the existing elevated walkway. And the walkway is roughly in here. It's important to note that there are no proposed changes or modifications to the walkway. The house is designed to tie into the existing walkway as it is constructed today. But also that elevated walkway, we are acknowledging a 0-foot setback from the side and a 0-foot setback to the water course or drainage adjustment. So here is the design and proposal. So the proposal is for approximate 3,600-square-foot single-family residence. Four onsite parking spaces are proposed, two for the proposed single-family residence, which is in compliance with the code, but also maintaining the two that is still required per the deed restriction for the adjoining property over here on Lot 329. And so a couple items of consideration when staff was reviewing the project. And as I mentioned, the property has a fairly steep slope. And uniquely, in this situation, the zoning ordinance does have a slope exception that's in the zoning ordinance, which would otherwise allow for a structure to be placed closer or within that front setback based on the slope. However, due to the mapped setback, we are unable to apply that slope exception to this particular property. And that's why we're here before you today for a subdivision modification proposal. Also, with regards to the water course, the water course again is entirely on Lot 329. 33 feet is proposed from that center line of that drainage adjustment. And the construction as proposed, it was determined, would not be detrimental to the drainage adjustment and its purpose. And due to the slopes, the map setbacks, all of the constraints of the site that I have spoke of in this presentation, we have found as the Development Review Committee that we are requesting that the planning commission take the following actions: determine that the project be categorically exempt per SEQA Section 15303 and per Section 18.36.050 of Placer County's Environmental Review Ordinance, and specifically Class 3. And also recommend that the planning commission approve the subdivision map modification of the Alpine Meadows Estates subdivision to allow for a 16-foot, 6-inch front setback, 13 feet, 6 inches to the eaves, where there's a required 20-foot map setback in order to construct a single-family residence, including a two-car garage and covered entryway, and supported by the findings contained in the staff report. And then also approve the two variances. The variance to the 100-foot water course setback to allow for a 33-foot setback from the center line for the residence. And also acknowledge a variance for a 0-foot side setback where there is a 10-foot requirement for the existing elevated walkway constructed over the property line shared between the two lots. So with that, that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Stacy. Is the applicant, I think it's Wyatt Ogilvy, available? Okay. Yeah, let's hear from Wyatt, and then maybe we can address questions between the both of you. Wyatt, if you're watching, maybe try to call in again. Do you guys have any questions for Stacy at this point?
Well, I guess, yeah, while we're filling up the time here. It sounds like from the aspect of the engineering department, the 16-foot setback is going to be okay in terms of being able to park cars and not have a problem with the snow removal equipment running into them if they're parked in the driveway?
Correct. This is actually a vast improvement from what exists today. Currently, there is essentially no area for cars to park in front of the garage unless they're in the right-of-way. So that impedes the snow removal operations today. Whereas the proposal will allow those cars to be off the road, out of the right-of-way, which will allow snow removal to just have their clear path.
And the existing structures are going to be demolished?
Correct.
Okay.
I understand that Wyatt's on the phone, so let's hear from Mr. Ogilvy.
Mr. Ogilvy, you are on live in the hearing room. Please proceed.
Good afternoon, commissioners. This is Wyatt Ogilvy of Ogilvy Consulting, in representation of the property owner, William Bartlett.
Hello, Mr. Ogilvy. You're with the commission, and we just heard from Stacy Wydra about your proposal here. And I wonder if you had any comments or anything to add with your project?
No, I'd like to thank Ms. Wydra for doing a good and concise job. We have reviewed the staff summary and the conditions of approval, as well as the findings of the requested map modification and variance, and are in agreement with those. And so I have no comment unless either any of the commissioners have questions, or of course, if there's any public comment, I'd like the ability to respond to those at a later point in the hearing.
Okay, thank you. Bring it to the commission and ask if they have any questions for planner or applicant? Okay, let's open up to public comment then and see if we have any public in the queue. We'll wait 30 seconds.
I guess I'm presuming that this recommendation covers both parcels?
No.
Okay.
Okay, past the time, I think. Is there anyone in the queue at this point? Okay, we'll close public comment, bring it for a commission discussion.
Well, if there's no discussion, I'm glad to wade my way through all of this that Stacy's put together for us. I'd like to make a motion that we find that the project is categorically exempt from review under SEQA pursuant to provisions of Section 15303 of the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA Guidelines, and Sections 18.36.050
Act, SEQA Guidelines and Sections 18.36.050 of the Placer County Environmental Review Ordinance, Class 3, new construction or conversions of small structures, because the exemption consists of construction and location of new structures, including the construction of one single-family residence, and supported by, okay, Stacy, you had it up there for a minute. Supported by the findings.
And subject to conditions of approval?
And conditions of approval. Thank you.
And I'll second that.
Okay, first and the second?
I have a first from Mr. Nader, a second from Mr. Moss, so a vote from Mr. Johnson, please.
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Hersog?
Yes.
Mr. Howgie?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. I would further move that we approve the subdivision map modification in the tract number 200, Alpine Meadows Estates subdivision, unit number nine, lot 330, to allow for a 16-foot, 6-inch front setback, 13-foot, 6-inch front setback to the eaves, where there is a required 20-foot map setback, Snowcrest Road, in order to construct a single-family residence, including a two-car garage and covered entryway, approximately 130 square feet of the garage would encroach into the 20-foot map setback, supported by the findings contained in the staff report.
And subject to the conditions of approval.
Subject to the conditions of approval, yes, thank you, Clayton.
Second, first and the second?
A first from Mr. Nader, a second from Mr. Moss, so a vote from Mr. Johnson, please.
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Hersog?
Yes.
Mr. Howgie?
Yes.
Thank you.
And I would further move that we approve the variances, the variance to the 100-foot water course setback to allow for a setback of 33 feet measured from the center line of the mapped dedicated drainage easement waterway for the construction of the single-family residence, and B, variance to allow for a zero-foot side setback where there is a required 10-foot side setback, and a zero-foot water course setback where there is a required 100-foot setback from the center line of the water course in order to recognize an existing elevated walkway constructed to the property line over the drainage easement waterway for the purposes of providing access to the adjoining lot of 329, supported by the findings contained in the staff report and the conditions of approval.
Second, first and the second?
I have a first from Mr. Nader, a second from Mr. Moss, so a vote from Mr. Johnson, please.
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Hersog?
Yes.
Mr. Howgie?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so the decision of the Planning Commission may be appealed by anyone who appeared at today's hearing and provided a comment, or anyone that submitted written comments on this item. An appeal must be filed within 10 days of today's date and shall be accompanied by a filing fee of $619. Moving on to our fifth agenda item, 1115 item, we're going to go ahead and, the Bartlett Alpine Meadows Estates subdivision, unit number nine, lot 329. And members of the public may now begin calling in at 530-886-1800 to begin queuing in for a public comment on this item, which will not begin until the item presentation is complete. So Stacy Wydra, once again, go ahead and begin.
Great, thank you again. So I'm here today to present to you the adjoining parcel, lot 329, from the last presentation that I just made. But just to, again, get you quickly oriented, it's in the same subdivision of lot 330, the Alpine Meadows Estates, and it is located at 1163 Snowcrest Road, and this is known as lot 329. The parcel has the same residential general plan designation and single-family residential zoning. The Alpine Meadows Estates subdivision, unit number nine, when it was recorded, uniquely with this parcel, not only does it have the two mapped setbacks, so the mapped front 20 setback and the mapped rear 60-foot setback, but the drainage easement is entirely located on this parcel. Specifically, if you can see here, the drainage takes on many different widths as it goes, as it bisects through the parcel. The width, the greatest width it has is about approximately 36 feet wide. And then, as you can see, the drainage comes from uphill and then goes underneath the road through a culvert onto this parcel, and then out into the open space areas of the subdivision, which then leads into Bear Creek. So the site is fairly cumbersome with all of the required setbacks, including the actual mapped drainage easement. And on this also upsloping, steep parcel, the building envelope, when applied, all of the required setbacks, it results in a zero-foot building envelope, in that the water course setback extends way over here onto the adjoining parcel. So uniquely, if we were to, you know, apply any, in all setbacks, there's no building envelope area. However, a existing single-family residence does, is constructed on the site today. And that residence was considered back in the '70s. I was unable to find a specific building permit for it, but what I was able to find was the associated parking that I spoke of on my previous presentation, which recognized the onsite parking on the adjoining parcel, which serves that existing single-family residence. So again, I won't go into all of the details, because they are the same, but the two parking spaces on lot 330 are still designated and accessible to lot 330. And lot 330 is requesting also a mapped modification to that front 20-foot setback, and they are requesting a 14-foot, 11-inch building front setback, 12 feet to the eaves. And then with its water course setback, they are asking for a 19-foot setback from the center line of the drainage easement and/or waterway for the construction of a new single-family residence, and then also recognize the existing elevated walkway, which again will not be redesigned or modified. The proposed single-family residence is going to tie into the existing elevated walkway. However, we would like to recognize it with this process before you today. So a zero-foot setback to the side, and then a zero-foot setback for the water course, for the existing elevated walkway. So specifically, the project site is located here. Here's the existing single-family residence. You can see that a portion of the existing residence is located within that drainage easement. But with the design of the proposed single-family residence, they are trying to get as far over from that drainage and the setback of the drainage as they can, while still maintaining the 10-foot side setback on this side. The residence is proposing a two-car garage, which would also provide parking for this single-family residence on its own. While the deed restriction is still recorded, this parcel still has legal access to park on this parcel as well. However, it's important to note that both parcels are owned by the same owner. Also, what's important to note is this single-family residence that's proposed also maintains a 20-foot setback from the face of the garage to the edge of traveled way. So again, achieving no impacts to snow removal operations of Snowcrest Road. Similarly to lot 330, very steep slope, however, the slope exception cannot be applied due to that mapped setback. And the construction that is, or the proposed residence is improving the existing conditions by getting outside of that easement, as well as being, you know, trying to build as close as they can to the side setback. So with that, the Development Review Committee is requesting that the Planning Commission take the following actions, and subject to the conditions of approval contained in the staff report, but to find that the project is categorically exempt per SEQA Section 15303, as well as Section 18.36.050 of our Placer County Environmental Ordinance, specifically Class 3. And then also approve the subdivision map modification to allow for a 14-foot, 11-inch front setback to the structure, 12 feet front setback to the eaves, where a 20-foot map setback is required in order to construct a two-car garage and covered entryway associated with the proposed single-family residence. And also approve the following variances, a variance to the 100-foot water course setback to allow for a setback of 19 feet measured from the center line for the construction of the single-family residence, and also approve the variance to allow for a zero-foot side setback where there is a 10-foot required, and a zero-foot water course setback where there is a 100-foot required setback for the recognition of the existing elevated walkway constructed to the property line and over the drainage easement for purposes of providing access to the adjoining lot 330, and all of which are supported by the findings contained in the staff report and subject to the conditions of approval. So with that, that concludes my presentation, and happy to respond to any questions.
I have a question. Stacy, maybe I should have asked this the last time. You mentioned about the drainage does go into Bear Creek, and because there's a fairly aggressive description of what the waters of the United States are, is there an issue with this drainage area at all with any of the other agencies?
No, in fact, we did receive a comment letter from, and it's in your packet, from La Houghton Regional Water Quality Control Board. They had three conditions, of which the project will be able to comply with. Two of them aren't really applicable in that the project isn't over an acre, so they don't need to do a pollutant NPDES permit with them. But they did review it, did recognize it, and provided comments, so, or indoor conditions.
So nothing from any of the federal agencies or Fish and Wildlife?
Nope.
All right.
That kind of along those lines, is that a year-round stream, or is it intermittent drainage?
Well, it kind of depends on how much it snows, but so it's more intermittent.
It could be year-round.
It could be, yes, yes.
Okay, do you guys feel like there's any, would you like to hear from the applicant on this one?
Only if he wants to comment.
Let's ask the applicant Wyatt Ogilvy if he'd like to comment on this particular project as well.
Mr. Ogilvy, would you care to comment?
No, this is Wyatt Ogilvy. I could have repeated my, or I should have recorded my previous comment. We've read the staff summary, conditions of approval, have no questions, and accept them as drafted, so thank you very much.
Okay, let's open up the public comment. No one in the queue right now? Just want to respect the delay. Close public comment. I don't think we need to hear response from the applicant.
Oh, I have a question.
Okay.
Okay. It might be a minor question.
Yeah.
Any rate, the deeded access for this parcel to the neighbor's garage. I see you mentioned that both parcels are owned by the same person, but at some point in time, they may be owned by two different persons. So what's the significance of maintaining that deeded access to the neighbor's garage?
Well, I don't know if it's significance, but until they either abandon that deed restriction, the residents of this parcel, so 329, can park on lot 330. They are under, you know, same ownership. However, both of these residences have been designed to comply and have the required parking spaces for each lot individually. However, again, the way the deed restriction is written and still recorded, yes, anyone on this lot could park over here.
So at some point in time, they probably could take care of that separately from dealing with us?
If they wish. Now, and just bear in mind, there's still that existing elevated walkway that ties the two together. I mean, it's kind of cozy when you, but I guess they could eliminate or remove that walkway. But, but yeah, till such time, they can go through the process of abandoning or removing that deed restriction.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Could you put it back?
Okay, bring it back to commission discussion, if you have any or do motion.
You want to do it, Jim?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. And I guess all the motions will be made subject to the conditions of approval and the findings, staff report, but I would, we, motion that we find the project is categorically exempt from the review under SEQA pursuant to provisions of Section 15303 of the California Environmental Quality Act Guidelines and Section 18.36.050 of the Placer County Environmental Review Ordinance, Class 3, new construction or conversion of small structures, because the exemption consists of construction and location of new structures, including the construction of one single-family residence.
Second?
Second.
We got two seconds, whatever.
Let's take a vote.
I have a first from Mr. Moss, a second from Mr. Nader, a vote from Mr. Johnson, please.
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Hersog?
Yes.
Mr. Howgie?
Yes.
Thank you.
I would further move that we approve the subdivision map modification in the tract number 200 Alpine Meadows Estates subdivision, unit number nine, lot 329, to allow for a 14-foot, 11-inch front setback, 12-foot front setback to the eaves, where there is a required 20-foot map setback from Snowcrest Road, in order to construct a single-family residence, including a two-car garage and covered entryway. Approximately 151 square feet of the garage would encroach into the 20-foot map setback, supported by the findings contained in the staff report.
Subject to conditions of approval?
I think I started with that, that everything, every motion I made was going to be subject, but we can certainly add that for clarity, subject to the conditions of approval.
Second.
Take a vote.
I have a first from Mr. Moss, a second from Mr. Nader, so a vote from Mr. Johnson, please.
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Hersog?
Yes.
Mr. Howgie?
Yes.
Thank you.
I would further move that we approve variances, A, variance to the 100-foot water course setback to allow for a setback of 19 feet measured from the center line of the mapped dedicated drainage easement slash waterway for the construction of the single-family residence. Can we do these both at once?
Yes.
And B, variance to allow for a zero-foot side setback where there is a required 10-foot side setback, and a zero-foot water course setback where there is a required 100-foot setback from the center line of the water course, in order to recognize an existing elevated walkway constructed to the property line and over the drainage easement slash waterway for the purpose of providing access to the adjoining lot 330, supported by the findings contained in the staff report.
Second.
Take a vote.
I have a first by Mr. Moss, a second by Mr. Nader, so a vote from Mr. Johnson, please.
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Hersog?
Yes.
Mr. Howgie?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so the decision of the Planning Commission may be appealed by anyone who appeared at today's hearing and provided comment, or anyone that submitted written comments on this item. An appeal must be filed within 10 days of today's date and shall be accompanied by a filing fee of $619. It's 1:30 on the dot, and we're going to go ahead and adjourn this meeting today.
Very good.
Well done.
Thank you.
Good.